All right, everyone. Let's start to bring it in here. All right, it is 2:03 PM on this Tuesday, November 26, 2024, and I would like to call to order this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. Now, moving on for roll call by our Vice President, Adam Mayberry.
Good afternoon, Madam President. Jeff Church, here. Adam Mayberry is here. Diane Nicolet.
Good afternoon.
Beth Smith. Colleen Westlake. Alex Woodley.
Here.
It's here via Teams, and our student representative, Annie Batavia. Yes, ma'am, thank you. We have a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. All right, so for any good group, whether you're a governing body, or a team, or a company, you need people with different perspectives, so that when all the people come together, you can cover all the spectrum, all 360 degrees of a circle, when you're considering a situation. And one of our colleagues is one of the people whose wisdom and curiosity is something that I value, in addition to the way that she brings people together into her decision-making and leads with service. She is the only person at this dais that has experience in education, and prior to being a trustee, which she has been twice, she has a long range of service among many different committees, commissions, and work that she's done for this community. I consider her the elder stateswoman of our board, and I value her deeply as a colleague. Dr. Diane Nicolet, would you please lead us in the pledge?
... states of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And now we'll move on to Item 1.04, our land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their distant homes in the hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We acknowledge that some of our educational structures are situated in the traditional homelands of the Washu, Washo, Nu'umu, Northern Paiute, Ni'uit, Western Shoshone, and Nu'uku, Southern Paiute peoples. We pay respect to their elders, past and present. These lands continue to be a gathering place for indigenous peoples, and we recognize their deep connections to these places. We extend our appreciation for the opportunity to live and learn in their territory. Thank you. That closes Item 1.04 and Section 1 in its entirety, and we'll open up now to Section 2, our consent agenda items. So today before us, we have Items 2.02 through to 2.09. I have not heard from any colleagues interested in pulling any of those items. If we have any public comment for Items 2.02 to 2.09.
The board received emails for Item 2.09 from Joyce Martin, Rachel Foster, and Colby Reardon.
Very good. All right, I'll bring it back to this dais and look for a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 2.02 to 2.09.
Madam President, I will move the Board of Trustees to approve Consent Agenda Items 2.02 through 2.09.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Vice President Mayberry, seconded by Trustee Nicolet. Seeing no lights on for discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries six to zero. Thank you so much, colleagues. That closes Section 2 in its entirety, and we'll move on now to Section 3. These are our items for presentation, discussion, information, and/or action. And we will first start with Item 3.01, the presentation and discussion on the partnerships between the Washoe County School District and the Food Bank of Northern Nevada, Assistance League Reno Sparks, and the Education Alliance of Washoe County, and how they support student academic achievement. This is an item for presentation and discussion only. We have many special guests with us. Sarah Gobbs Hill, the Executive Director of the Education Alliance; Nicole Lamboli, Executive Director of the Food Bank of Northern Nevada; and Heidi Jackson, President of the Assistance League; and Lisa Hansen, Assistance League and former WCSD principal. I'm sure we'll be hearing from them in a moment, our invited guests. But in front, we have Dr. Paula Marca, our Chief Student and Family Supports Officer, and Michelle Anderson, our Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer. And Dr. LaMarca and Chief Anderson, before you get started, I wanted to share with the community and in attendance today that this was an item of specific request by Dr. Diane Nicolet. So as we know, our colleagues can come and they can bring ideas forward for consideration and discussion, and this was an area that Dr. Nicolet felt very passionate about. And so we have very purposefully placed it this week, the week of Thanksgiving, and I'd like to invite Trustee Nicolet to talk a little bit about why she asked for the item and her history with this. Thank you.
Thank you, President Smith. The why? Why? Because I've had the experience with all three of these stellar community partners, Food Bank, Assistance League, and Education Alliance, and have witnessed and been part of firsthand their work, and it's honorable and it's worthy of distinction. And so often, as many of our partners are, these three in particular today, are just silent champions. They just do it with great cause and without desire to be recognized. And so I think it's fitting that we take a moment to recognize them, especially during this Thanksgiving time, because we truly have so much to be thankful for in Washoe County, let alone Washoe County School District. I just wanted to say, a real heartfelt, that these three organizations, Food Bank of Northern Nevada, Education Alliance, and the Assistance League of Reno Sparks, they three have something very, very much in common. They share a vision whereby they know their organizations thrive and participate through the work of their boards and their committees. And their boards and their committees are really those behind-the-scenes people that are doing the moment-to-moment, day-to-day, month-to-day work. And they have exemplary boards and committees that serve us all year long, seven days a week, again, behind-the-scenes silent champions. Food Bank of Northern Nevada, as well as the Education Alliance, are 100% giving boards, which means every board member contributes. And that's extremely important, that the board members recognize that they have a role in helping the organization thrive. And lots of times, that has to do with the dollars, not only time and heart, but the dollars. And then the Assistance League of Reno Sparks, they are a GuideStar Platinum participant, which means that there are very rigorous guidelines that they must uphold, accounting, finances, how they participate, who they participate with, why they participate, and their goals are clear. So they have that distinction. Longer story short, all three of them make a huge difference in our community, and I hope that they're around for a very, very long time to come. And anything we can do to make them feel important and as special as they truly are is our gift to them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Trustee Nicolet. All right, team, take it away.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Dr. Nicolet. For the record, my name is Markham, the Chief Student and Family Supports Officer, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, members of the board. Thank you for this great opportunity. I'm joined by our amazing Michelle Anderson. I'm sure she will introduce herself momentarily. And it is really a privilege to be able to sit up here. I know Rochelle Maria, she's out of the country, and she would like to be here. Catherine Loudren is here. They would both love to be able to share how much they appreciate these organizations and what they do for us. And that's all three of them. We were going to talk about two of them, but Education Alliance is our partner as well. So I am going to start with the Food Bank of Northern Nevada, and I hope Nicole Lambli is here. She was in the area, but she might have been on the phone. And you guys went incredibly fast, you know? Sometimes it's hard. Okay, yes. Okay, so let's start with the Assistance League, and maybe Nicole will join us. So I'm going to start with the Assistance League, and we do have Heidi Jackson, our President of that board, as well as Lisa Hansen, who is a former principal of our school district, as was mentioned. That's a completely voluntary organization, which I think is really important to point out. They've been in our community, I believe, for nearly 50 years. I think they've been a partner with ours from the onset, and they've done amazing things within our schools. And they have primarily, from our vantage point, they probably are touching the district in many ways I'm unaware of, but they have supported our Intervention Department, our Counseling Department, and our SCL Department. Here are some of the specific things that they have provided to our students and our families. First, let me say, I believe their mission is to support children, seniors, and veterans, as well as victims of abuse. And they do partner with us to support our students and our families, and it's really incredibly important. You see on the screen, and forgive us for a couple of typos, but they provided nearly $20,000 to offset athletic fees for some of our high school students, provided caps and gowns for many of our CIT. Those are children living in transition, or children who are homeless, our graduates who are part of that program. $60,000 in scholarships for students, and we have a bunch of students at TMCC right now, in part because of the assistance of the Assistance League. They provide food. They provide... Operation School Bell is probably one of the programs that most people are aware of. Through that, at the elementary level, they've provided clothing for more than 4,000 students. They have provided a lot of support for clothing for some of our high school students as well. And in addition to the scholarships for students, they've provided awards for individual teachers, as well as groups of teachers. And like the Food Cabinet, like Education Alliance, I think what we're seeing here is supporting our students and our families through education and through everything they need takes more than what the school district can do in isolation, is from the partnerships that we're able to optimize learning. So I would love it if Heidi or Lisa would like to come up and maybe say a couple words.
Welcome. Thank you so much for being here with us.
Thank you for having us. This is a very wonderful way to say thank you to us. I like that we're considered a silent champion, but I'm going to pass that on to the folks at the Assistance League. I want to share with you that we are about 370 members in Assistance League, and we are 100% volunteer. So our board consists of our members. We do have an Advisory Council. Sarah Gobbs Hill is one of our members on our Advisory Council. We have a wonderful, very energetic, full-of-life membership that makes all of this happen. Operation School Bell, this is our 40th year of having Operation School Bell in the community. And over the years, we have clothed 100,000 Washoe County students. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. And I'll tell you, it means a lot to us, too, to see the smiles on the faces and the kids being excited about getting their own toothbrush and holding up their new shoes. It tugs at our heart as well. We do have other programs. I don't know if Washoe County School District wants to, is interested in them, but I do want to just mention them, that we do serve veterans. We have two programs that serve seniors, and we do a lot with the VA Hospital in partnership with the VA Hospital, and serve America's heroes as well. So thank you for having us. Very much appreciate it.
Thank you so much. And my son's school, my younger son's school, just did a closing drive with the Assistance League, Colin Ranch Elementary, so thank you so much for doing that.
Thank you. And so now, we'll go back, and we'll talk about the Food Bank of Northern Nevada for just a little bit, and Nicole Lambli is now here, and maybe she will come up and say a couple words as well. Again, this is a partner that's been in our community for more than 40 years. I think we have partnered with them that entire time. I don't know that for sure. It's longer than I've been in the community. I've only been here for about 35 years. They work with about 155 different partners in providing food and support to families in our community, and we're one of those partners, and I think we're lucky for it. They serve 155,000 individuals monthly, and somewhere around half of those individuals are seniors or children. And so just critically important support, I think. 21 million meals this past school year, which is, it's just, it's hard to even contemplate how much we eat as people. Here are some of the very specific things that they support us with. They provide primary support from our lens to our Intervention Department, especially around our CIT program, and also around our Family Resource Centers. But they also provide, and I think a couple dozen of our elementary schools, food pantries, food for their food pantries. They provide food for our food pantries at our five family resource centers. They support us with food for our mobile harvests that run through our Family Resource Centers. In the summer months, when we're not in school, they provide some summer kids cafes, so families can still receive some of that critical support while their kids aren't in our buildings. They have this backpack program. So, and this is not just CIT kids who receive this ongoing support, it's any child who needs food. So I would love it if Nicole would come up and share a couple comments.
Welcome, Nicole. Thank you for being with us.
Good afternoon, Nicole Lamboli, CEO of the Food Bank of Northern Nevada. And I think we understate how important the partnership is with the school district in helping us feed families through all of the things that Paul referenced, but really, it's also the partnership with nutrition services, with Adam Cersei, Daniel Pym, and all of the support teams that help provide those meals through the kids cafe, our CACFP and summer feeding program. So we're able to meet the needs. We know during the pandemic, it was together that we served more than 600,000 meals in a year to students because of the result of the pandemic, and we couldn't have done that without JIP. For 41 years, the Food Bank has been a staple in this community. Our roots go deep, but our roots go deep because of the community that lifts up all of our families and individuals. And so we are so grateful. We look forward to another 40 years. We have some big projects ahead to help address root causes and provide holistic supports to families who are struggling. For us, it's not just about feeding people, but it's also about nutrition security. We are really focused on making sure that people have access to the healthy food that helps them thrive. We know that kids, when they're hungry, it's difficult to learn, it's difficult to play, it's just difficult to be a kid. So thank you for the opportunity. Thank you to all of the school district team for helping us be a part of your community. Together, we can feed our community. So thank you.
Thank you.
I did want to mention that during the pandemic, just how important their relationship with us was for our families. The other thing I would like to say, and I don't know if they still offer this, the last time I did this was just before the pandemic, but if you get an opportunity, I think you can volunteer and go to their food distribution center and help them sort through the food that's donated from other families in our community. And it's just incredible, and it's eye-opening, the amount of work that goes into feeding our community. So I would encourage you to take advantage of that, and we can help maybe facilitate that. I'll turn it over to Michelle now.
Thank you, Dr. LaMarca. Michelle Anderson, Chief Communications, Community Engagement Officer. And I am proud to sit up here and tell you a little bit about the Education Alliance of Washoe County. You will see their mission up there is to unite our community, to illuminate and clear pathways for every Washoe County student's brightest future. For more than 30 years, the Education Alliance has connected our community with our school district to address important needs affecting our students. And they accomplish this by working with businesses, agencies, and entities in our area. Their programs and initiatives help all kids succeed. And you'll see, I've listed a couple, we've listed a couple up there, the Carrying Through Classrooms. This is the initiative that is focused on serving the school district's highest priority needs. In recent years, a lot of you will remember our digital divide with the laptop drive during COVID. They also help address student health and wellness and additional mental health support. Partners in Education, I think, is something that we are all familiar with. It's a program designed to help match interested parties in our community with our school district, again, to address those important funding and resources. And then principal for a day, and it's moved to a half-day, because we know how busy our community members are. This is a chance for our community members to come into the classroom and the schools to really see what it takes to be a principal. And as we all know, we have some outstanding, hard-working principals, and that has been very eye-opening for a lot of our community members. And the great news is, as a result, we have had a lot of businesses and community members become partners in education based on that visit. We also have the Teachers Warehouse, and we have great donations throughout the community, and this is where our teachers can come and get materials free, and they're donated by these companies to help their classrooms. And then last, but certainly not least, is our Red Field Outreach Program. It's a program that serves specific, high-need schools by providing assistance for in-class and field trip opportunities with a goal of improving the opportunity gap that can exist for our under-resourced students. And I would be remiss if I didn't say that we have a small but mighty team with our Education Alliance. Sarah Gobbs Hill, who I'll call up in just a few moments, hopefully she'll come up to speak. She's the Executive Director. We have Brittany Hagerty, who is our Collaborative Coordinator, and Lindsay Beck is our Secretary. So you have three staff members for Education Alliance, and then obviously a whole host of volunteers for the board. Sarah has been with the Education Alliance for just about a year, I think actually it was a year last week, and she's already made significant changes, and there is much more to come. Currently, for our Carrying Through Classrooms initiative, they have partnered with the community to focus on student engagement strategies as evident-based ways to improve attendance and connectedness to school and decrease chronic absenteeism. They have worked strategically with our Intervention Department and Mr. Mike Kazmierski with strength in our community to identify highly impactful ways funding and relationships can make a difference. They continue to build awareness, as well as what is being done, both in the district and the community. And they are part of the kickoff campaign when it comes to that. Partners in Education, this program, as I mentioned, is bringing interested parties into the school. And currently, they're meeting with many of our current partners to learn how they can enhance the program. This year specifically, they've worked to increase the visibility of the work of these organizations and what they do to benefit our schools. And then the Red Field Outreach Program, they are working with 16 community partner organizations to have students learn as much as they can through in-class experiences such as PBS Reno's workshops, or out in the community with Career Exploration at U. and Fielding Locations such as the Nevada Museum of Art. This year, there have been great family engagement evenings hosted by Sierra Nevada Journeys, and again, the Discovery Museum. and again, the Discovery Museum, which many of her schools have raved about. It really is allowing some of our students who would not ordinarily be able to visit these locations have that opportunity. And they hear from principals, I will say, all the time, what a difference this program makes for their students and families. And with that, I will ask Ms. Gobbs Hill to come up. And she is incredible. I will say, probably one of the best hires that I'm so proud of because she just is knocking it out of the park in a year.
Welcome, Sarah, and happy anniversary.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I hope to say, I hope next year to be here at the same time and hopefully we can be celebrating some more. One of the things that I just really wanted to say is that everyone in the community and working with our partners, there is such amazing pride in in the education that is happening in the classrooms. And I think sometimes the perception beyond Washoe County, if you're not in the classroom, is one of confusion sometimes, like not understanding the full role. And I will say, when as we're bringing partners in and they can really see what all staff are doing across the district, people are truly just shocked at just the amount that people are doing, at the the passion and the drive that people have to make things better for our kids. And that's one of the best parts, I think, of the job so far, is just really inviting people into that space. I did want to mention, since I am here and there's there's a room of people, that we are, we are kicking off a I'm Here campaign for the end of the year, really looking to solicit and invite people in to help bring in more additional resources to help with the chronic absenteeism. We know so many of our students are here. They want to be here. They love this space. And for those that can't, many times, it's beyond their control. So, what can we do to help make it better? And so, you'll see more information about that coming in. But we would love for your support in any way that you want to be involved with Education Alliance. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. And I will say that every year, you put on the best dessert bar in all of Northern Nevada at your event. And if you don't know what that is, then I encourage you to attend next year's Evening of Pure Imagination.
And then I just want to end on this slide because we could not do this alone. You guys have seen this slide before by our superintendent, and so I may have stole it from one of his previous presentations. But together, we create a brighter future for every student. We could not do it without these three community partners and then the many other community partners that we have in the district. So, on behalf of the school district, we thank all of you.
Thank you. All right, I'm looking for lights. Okay. We're going to have Dr. Nicolette close this out. Please be the last word on this.
Absolutely. We cannot and do not want to do this alone because we are stronger together. And I will close on this. Whatever you do for Thanksgiving, whether you celebrate it or not, whether you eat turkey or salmon, have a great, great Thanksgiving holiday. God bless you all.
Thank you. Thank you so much, team. This was wonderful. And thank you to all of our partners for making time on a busy week. Thank you. I'm so impressed. It just fills my heart to see all the partnerships and the wonderful people focused on our kids and our families. So, that closes item three point zero one and brings us now to item three point zero two. So, settle in while I read this one. Item three point zero two is the Award of Request for Proposal, RFP number eighty-eight dash P dash zero one dash twenty-four dash A.S. Consulting Services for Enterprise Resource Planning, ERP, Software Procurement, and Implementation Services to Application Software Technology LLC, beginning January one, two thousand twenty-five, for a term of approximately two years in the total estimated amount of eleven million, two hundred nine thousand, four hundred ninety-one dollars. Approval of the affiliated agreements with Oracle for a total possible term of ten years, including optional renewals, and the total estimated amount of eleven million, one hundred forty-five thousand, six hundred twenty-six dollars. Approval of the creation of a term-limited ERP Project Manager position to lead the Washoe County School District's ERP Project Team for an estimated cost of one hundred forty-two thousand, three hundred eighty-four dollars. And approval of Amendment Number One to the Agreement with Averro Advisors for ERP Consulting Services in the amount of forty-six thousand, six hundred twenty-two dollars and fifty-two cents. This is an item for possible action. And with us today, we have Dr. Chris Turner, our Chief Information Officer, Doug Owen, our Chief Human Resources Officer, and Mark Mathers, our Chief Financial Officer. Thank you so much, gentlemen.
Thank you, President Smith. I am Chris Turner, Chief Information Officer. I am joined, as you noted, by Chief Human Resources Officer Doug Owen and Chief Financial Officer Mark Mathers, who I'm sure will introduce themselves as we progress. And as you breathlessly made your way through that action item, I do want to acknowledge that this is four separate actions. We will spend the majority of the presentation discussing Enterprise Resource Planning, our Implementer AST, as well as the Oracle platform, the the software platform that we've selected to adopt. But we also want to include that there is an action item related to a small contract change with our consultant, Averro, as well as we have a Project Manager Position request. So, from the slide, you can see that an Enterprise Resource Planning platform is a broad software program that's often now cloud-based, that administers both human resources and business and finance functions. And it also has links into our IT systems so that when a a new user is created in human resources, it triggers the automatic creation of an email account and that person's identity within the school district. Modern enterprise resource planning platforms can increase our efficiency, and it will. In our, in our case, it will, it will move us from a state of paper-based workflows to completely automated workflows. So, we're looking forward to that efficiency. ERPs also contribute to our business intelligence. We'll have better data available more rapidly on our screen rather than the very intensive process where we have to click and export a spreadsheet and then do a pivot table. Now, all of the data that we need will be readily available to us right on our screens. We're looking forward to that efficiency. So, why the change? Why are we seeking a change here? We know that software development has tremendously advanced in the last thirty years. And as you can see from the slide, we first adopted Business Plus for core financial functions in nineteen ninety-five. And then we, and then we added the Human Resources Module in nineteen ninety-seven. So, there are very few instances in organizations where you're still using thirty-year-old software. There may be examples that are very specialized where, or the company went out of business and we still need that function. But this is a space where we've well-outgrown the functionality of Business Plus. It did not scale with us. It's too labor-intensive to support. And it's hosted on our own premises rather than in the cloud and the advantages that cloud hosting offers us. So, from an operational perspective, our current platform has largely outlived its useful life here at Washoe County School District. It's inefficient, and we're looking forward to increased efficiency with this new platform. And now I'll pass it off to Doug.
Good afternoon. Doug Owen, for the record. My pleasure to come talk to you today about the ERP project, of course. Chris covered quite a few of the benefits of the platform. But I'd wanted to dive in a little bit because some of the things we talk about are relative to maybe IT staff or finance staff or human resources staff. At the end of the day, this impacts every employee within the school district and potentially anybody that is serviced by us. So, if you have a spouse on a benefit plan that may not be an employee, but they certainly use our services. These are things, elimination of manual processes. I don't know how many documents I sign every day, but physical paper is the bane of my existence some days. Centralized and up-to-date data. If you asked us for a vacancy report, Mark and I will get back to you, maybe in a week. And that's difficult to make real-time decisions, right? We talk about transparency. If you want to know, we have an allocation. We get that job posted. We get that job filled. It creates an IT identity, if you will. Those are essentially three different functions at the moment. We'd like for that to be one, and we can see each other's, each other's workflow to make sure that it flows smoothly. We talk about several other bullets on this list. I think when we talk about the employees, you can think about self-service options. So, if you want to go in and change your direct deposit, if you want to go in and change your address because you moved, it shouldn't be a request and seven days later, you get updated information with a new address. You can go actively do that yourself. So, things like that are enhancements that we're looking forward to. When we asked for a list of benefits moving to an ERP system, we could have given you a forty-page slide deck on just that, but we tried to simplify that down a little bit. The good news about an ERP platform that is cloud-based is that there are regular updates as part of that system. So, on a quarterly basis, you get new functionality and it's scalable for our future growth as an organization. So, those are some of the expected benefits. And now I'll turn it over to my colleague, Mark.
Yeah, just, just to add on to that, I really think it's hard to describe the scope and scale of the efficiencies and benefits here. You know, it goes from employees being able to access the year, a new ERP system on their phone. So, if they need to make a change to their timesheet, they can do it on their phone. Or an approver of a timesheet can do it on our phone. And that somewhat trivializes, I think, the, that enhancement. But it, you know, right now, you have to go onsite into your office, into Business Plus to do things, really, really silly. You know, in terms of business intelligence of our users, I'll, I'll take it down to the school level. Wouldn't it be great if a principal could easily see, as Doug said, their allocations? What are their vacancies? They can't right now. Wouldn't it be great if they could see their budget across all funds? So, they could see their general fund budget against their title fund budget and so forth. They can't right now. They have to run different reports and try to mash those up to really strategize about their staffing needs and and how to best leverage those monies. So, and and I remember Doug, when he first came here, I think it was the first week or two, he asked about, what's the cost to do this recruitment? And, you know, we were just rolled laughing. But wouldn't it be great to know what the cost of that recruitment is? You know, and and make analytical data, you know, data-driven decisions. We talk about that a lot, but we are really prevented from doing that to a much greater degree because of the older system we have. That, that data just has to be pulled, extracted, again, sometimes over days, to get trustees' answers or just public requests, a public records request fulfilled. And I talked to my staff about how in other organizations, here's how fast it takes to get that report out. You know, I push a button, it's done. With Business Plus, that's most of the time simply not possible. So, I just wanted to echo some of the things Doug said to give you a flavor of what life will look like in a couple of years when we have a new ERP system.
So, as you can see from the slide, we've been really deliberate about this process. We began considering a replacement for Business Plus in late two thousand twenty-one. Mark and myself and former CHRO Emily Ellison paired up. We, we grouped up to discuss where we need to be. Mark really kicked off the process the most succinctly I've ever heard. He said, I do not want to be the person responsible for passing off this platform to my successor. And I think that really nailed it for me, too. But it's unfair for all the employees, the people that staff our, our school district shouldn't be working with an outdated, non-scale tool. So, using a process that I've used previously, we, we just invited many of the biggest vendors in the industry to come and provide demonstrations. And those began in twenty twenty, late twenty twenty-one and early twenty twenty-two. And it wasn't just an opportunity for Doug or for Mark, Emily, and I to, to listen to the vendors and see their products. We actually invited stakeholders at all levels of the business and human resources and IT departments because it was more, we knew the value of moving to the new platform. What we really wanted was for the people that work with the tool every single day to learn how antiquated we currently are in our workflows and how efficient we can move to be. And so, what that, that process served to do was thankfully, it, it helped us gain what I would call, we, we talked about it today at lunch, we gained what I would say is a hundred percent consensus on this process. Everybody to a person that came out of those demonstrations back in twenty twenty-two said, let's move and let's move now. But we have to be very deliberate. This is a tremendously intensive project. We'll go over the timeline in a few minutes, but we know that it will be very impactful, but it's a heavy lift. So, we're trying to be very deliberative about it. Moving forward, we also, this was when I, I'm sorry, I was absent. I was on family medical leave in this part of twenty twenty-three. But Mark engaged with the Government Finance Officers Association to go through some training for some of the stakeholder staff about what the next steps may need to be. And what we identified was, we need a, we need an, sort of an owner's consultant that can help walk us through this acquisition process and implementation process. So, later in twenty, or mid twenty twenty-three, we engaged with Averro as our, as our consultant for the ERP process.
And so, just to carry this forward, and I, I think we were remiss in not letting you know, we do have representatives from Averro Advisors, our consultant, as well as Oracle and AST here in the audience. So, if there is a need to directly ask them a question, you can do that. They are here and they'll come up to the podium and answer that. But just to carry forward and give a little, little bit of background here, not speaking directly to the slide so much, but this is the third time we've actually come to you about the ERP project. So, in August of twenty twenty-three, or mid twenty twenty-three, we made the decision to move forward and budget for the ERP, which we have. And in August of twenty twenty-three, we came to you for approval of Averro Advisors' contract, again, to provide consulting and advisory services during all three phases of the ERP project. Phase one was kind of pre-implementation and pre-planning. Phase two was the Request for Proposal process and contract negotiations, which have now been completed. And phase three will be implementation. And so, they are there to represent our interests. They've been through ERP conversions before. We have a few people here who have been through ERP conversions. Gentlemen to my left here, for example, but there's not a lot of people in the organization that have been through this. So, we hired a consultant to walk us through it, show us where those pitfalls may be, and represent us every step of the way. So, that was August of twenty twenty-three that we came to the Board for approval of that contract. Then in February of this year, we came to you for creation of the five-member ERP team. And we'll talk about why we need to expand it to a sixth person in a bit. But that was our second kind of point of contact with you about the ERP project. And then this spring, we began the RFP process itself. So, what I wanted to share with you, this is actually the third time again, we've been to you about the ERP project. And this really is the last step in the process in terms of our contract with a software system, a new ERP system, and the firm that will help convert and implement that system over the next year and a half or so. So, on the next slide, we actually want to go through real quickly the RFP selection process. This was, again, a process we use, we use to select vendors, of course, as you know. And this was an, even a more intense RFP process than, than what we normally go through to select a new system. We know how monumental and how expensive this system is. And so, again, with Averro Advisors' intense assistance and, and work both in phase one and phase two, we issued an RFP in the spring. That included what we call a Requirements Tracability Matrix, which lists discrete services and functions. We either absolutely need an ERP system to do, those were kind of tier-one requirements versus kind of nice-to-haves and and desirables, which would be tier-two and three requirements. There were more than a thousand requirements that Averro helped us list that were part of the RFP process, where we went to each firm to say, okay, which of these services, tasks, requirements do you meet or not meet? And so, they all completed that. It covered every function gamut of central services, HR, and finance, and IT functions. And then, as is standard with RFPs, we looked at the price And then, as is standard with RFPs, we looked at the pricing references, the proposed team, and then we did three days of demos with each system as well. And so this is a summary of the scores. To explain here as well, these are the scores of shortlisted firms. Typically, your major ERP software providers like Oracle and, say, SAP that the county uses don't actually propose. They have licensed system implementers, separate firms who are responsible for the conversion of our old system to our new system. And they, as part of that overall pricing, include the licensing costs of the software itself. So when you see these names of the companies, you may be wondering, well, there's not Oracle listed up there, SAP listed up there. And that's because these are the system implementers that would implement either an Oracle or SAP system. And we looked at other systems as well, but these were the shortlisted firms. Shaded in green are the three system implementers of Oracle, or sometimes, you know, legacy system PeopleSoft, you've probably heard. So we saw, we we heard presentations from three system implementers of Oracle and one from SAP. So I know this is really small fonts here, but the first round, round one, you see is bait, was a scoring based on the requirements, traceability metrics I talked about, and the written response. So then we shortlisted firms. Round two, again, were those multi-day demos, which were, you know, eight to five, full three days. And even then, it seemed like we needed more time to ask questions, but we got through it. And then round three, where where it was scoring was based on pricing and client references. And so again, we had a multidisciplinary, multi-departmental evaluation team. We also went through, sorry, a best and final office offer process, where we asked firms to sharpen their pencils and improve their pricing. And so you can see the revised scores in the bottom half of this slide for the best and final offers for each firm. And AST was number one before the BOFO process, and they were number, they were number one firm after the BOFO process. So that's why they were selected and they are here today. And you see contracts with AST. Again, they're the system implementer Oracle. So we have a number of contracts that we're asking for approval for. They're both for AST to implement the system over the next year and a half. And then there are the licensing or subscription costs for the cloud version of Oracle. And those contracts are with Oracle directly, just to clarify. And so with that, I think I will turn it over to my colleagues to talk about those firms.
Thank you, Mark. And so Mark mentioned AST. This is just a little biographical information about them that you have in front of you. Just to clarify, Averro is our consultant and our advisor, representing and advocating for us. AST is the implementation partner and Oracle is the software we're actually using. So just to simplify that a little bit, AST, of course, has several clients. You'll see six hundred plus over there, as well as a large K-12 base, which is part of what we were looking for as we moved forward. They also have quite a bit of experience in the cloud space, specifically with Oracle. When you move to the
I'm sorry, Mr. President, Vice President Mayberry has a question.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Just thank you, Mr. Earl. Just just to clarify, you 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 would you address the question I was going to ask, but if you can just clarify that again, I'm struggling with understanding the the notion of a system implementer in in the the AST system in Oracle. Can you, can you give us that relationship again, please?
Yeah, sure thing. So AST is actually a system implementer where you purchase the Oracle software through AST. Is is essentially how that works, so they can implement it for the first X years of your project. In our case, it's two years, where they would be side by side with us, going through the requirements, configuring the system with us so that we could then test and go live with the Oracle system.
So the Oracle is a software system that that we're acquiring?
Yes.
And and the the AST, they're they're the folks that that implement it?
Yes.
Okay.
So typically, an AST and implementation partner will bring forward software developers, testing configuration managers, like a host of individuals to help you do the work to get live and get your data from your old system to your new system. And after they do that, they are no longer engaged with the project because it has ended. And now you're working with Oracle, who's the software vendor.
Thank you.
So and and on that note, just for a brief moment, could you maybe explain how Oracle, the system, can do a lot of things?
Yes.
AST and the way we do our business and the way we want to do our business requires customization because there's a really important layer there, if you could just for one moment.
Yep, absolutely. So many times in ERP projects or technology projects, we'll talk about, out of the box, what does the system do, right? Oracle is a bit of a blank slate. You can set up your budgets, you can set up your chart of accounts, you could set up the way that you do your hiring, onboarding, benefits. You can set it up the way you want to. Now that said, none of us at this table are Oracle experts and we don't have software developers that are Oracle experts. So we pull in people like AST to help us make our vision a reality in the Oracle system. So we tell them how we want it to be done, not necessarily how we do it today. Because as you mentioned a few slides earlier, we have quite a few inefficiencies in our current process. So we don't want to replicate those. We want to improve and enhance those processes so that you do get your benefits, or, you know, you can check your budgets or things like that. But we have to work through someone who understands the Oracle system to build that for us. So the next slide is on Oracle system functionality. And we've listed quite a few of those things already. But in case you were curious about looking into Oracle, this isn't everything they do. But for the purposes of the presentation, I think we talk a lot about the budgeting and financial side. We also talk about the employee lifecycle side. So you get human resources, payroll, benefits, recruiting, things like that. The next slide is really where I'd like to talk about the employee lifecycle, if you will. So from the time that we talk about attracting talent to the Washoe County School District until they go through a process where they're recruited, they are onboarded, they are developed and supported through either performance evaluations or learning and development, until they get to the point of performance reviews and eventual retirement or exit from the organization. It starts that whole process all over again for every single person. Last year, we put thirteen hundred people through a hiring process. And of course, every year, it's about the same. So that's kind of our turnover rate. That takes a while to get that number for us at the moment. But in the new system, when you have somebody that separates their employment and then there's an open allocation, we would already know, we would be able to then recruit against that open allocation. Then we could identify what are the learning and development needs of that individual based on their type, based on their profile, right? And then be able to get them functional in their role. So this is just a bit of, if you think about anything you go through as an employee when you join an organization, the system ushers you through and stewards you through that entire process.
Just just to put a finer point on that, right now, our recruiting tool is separate from our our ERP platform. So once we move to this new platform and employee inputs their demographic information to apply for a position, that information travels with them all the way through their employment. So we only have to input it, the employee does it in the first instance and we don't have to export that data to another system. Right now, we have to do that. So this is an example of an efficiency we're looking to accomplish. Okay, so this is a high-level timeline and this was part, as you can see, the date is October fifteenth. Pending the successful passage of this contract today, we'll have, we'll have, we'll be in direct discussions with AST for a more detailed timeline. But as you can see, the timeline covers over twenty months, but the bulk of the implementation begins in January with, and then in February, with two concurrent, large-scale implementations, both for for the budget and purchasing. I think it's budget and I can't read it myself, but also HR concurrently. And then there's some other pieces that will come in at the end. But the big pieces are fifteen months in duration, beginning in January, we hope.
Okay, I know this was an eye-popping cost and you're probably wondering, how do we, how do we do this? So we, the the cost of implementation, as well as the first year of licensing costs, are considered a capital cost. And so we have programmed the cost of this ERP system in our capital improvement plan for several years. The Capital Funding Protection Committee has seen this. You you all have seen this. We've known this was coming. This is in line with the costs that we heard during our due diligence in 2021 and 2022. Candidly, there was another system we looked at that was three times this cost, if you could believe it. So I'm not going to say this is a deal, but this is absolutely in line with the industry. And so again, we've certainly budgeted that cost of implementation in the CIP. We'll be able to cover that. Again, that's over multiple years. That's, you know, roughly eleven point two million. And then there's a ten-year cost for Oracle, I want to emphasize that, ten-year cost of eleven million dollars. So the annual licensing subscription cost is one point one million. The finance department has been aware of this cost for some time. We've programmed that into our long-range financial plan. And, you know, I kind of hate this expression, but it does actually apply here. You know, a lot of times, can you afford to do this? And the answer is, we can't, we we can't afford not to do it. Right? And I hate that kind of, because that's kind of, right, that strikes finance people the wrong way. But but in this case, it's absolutely true. We're just at the end of life of this system. Emily and I would worry candidly about the ability of our current system to muddle our way through going forward, given just the size of our organization. We are the largest customer of Business Plus, at least for their ERP system. And it was just, we were always probably too big. We're not the biggest customer Oracle has by a long shot. But the point of this slide is that we have programmed both the upfront capital costs in our CIP. We've checked with bond counsel. They've confirmed this is absolutely an eligible cost pursuant to NRS. And then annually, again, we are able to cover that one point one million dollar annual cloud-based subscription service. So we're, we're, we're good on this front.
Okay, and our final slide, and I'll, I'll kick us off, but please, gentlemen, chime in. I think the the parting takeaway here is that in the ERP system will be transformational, not only for the employees in this room and in this, in this building, but for every employee that we have. It really transforms the way that we work and the automation and the workflows that go into place. Everything from physical papers that people are filling out to us maintaining a record of you as an employee in one system. So I think we've, we've said quite a few things about the transformational nature of an ERP system and that's what we're looking to accomplish.
I'll just add to that. I mean, there's massive enhancements and efficiencies of this new software. And I don't want to minimize that. But what we learned when we did our due diligence, what I think Doug already knew wherever he was working at the time, was the real juice is the process changes and process improvements at the staff level and the greater ability to use analytics to do our job and and go up a notch in terms of analyzing what's going on. You know, either in, you know, with our vacancies or workforce or whatever. That's the real juice. Everyone's job in the central office certainly will change, but for the better. We'll be, they'll be doing higher-level work, more rewarding work, but work that generates a real return to the district and taxpayers versus having to really manipulate information out of the system on the side and do, in many cases, very menial tasks because of the lack of functionality of Business Plus. So that's, to me, where the real juice is and why this is so exciting.
Mark kind of concluded it, but I'll, I want to jump in with Superintendent Ernst has been impressing us with maintaining our talent pipeline. And the idea of moving to this more modern platform will be better for for Doug's purposes for onboarding new employees from from start to finish, but also from an employee standpoint in our departments. People aren't coming out of schools, out of universities now, trained on our discrete tool. They're trained in more general concepts that relate to this more modern tool. So for a recruiting standpoint, we can go up to you and our and talk to their database students in the computer science programs and talk to them about, you know, Microsoft SQL or Oracle SQL, some of the, some of the really computer science-related details around this system and they'll be able to understand it. So I think for for our central office employee purposes, for recruiting purposes, we'll be a lot better off moving to this because we won't be training down this dead end anymore.
All right, I have a question that is a question slash thought. And so we, I don't need our partners up, but I think you mentioned that out there we have partners from Oracle, AST and Averro out there. Okay. So my, my question is mainly more of a public affirmation and confirmation. So I've, I've had a good deal of experience of this, not in the public education space, but in the network system space for many years. So my question is, with the partners, the two consultant partners, AST and Averro, that we are proposing to either continue or commence an agreement with, oftentimes in the process, you meet members of the team and that can vary as to who we actually work with. And so what I'm looking for is a confirmation from the three of you gentlemen and also our partners in the back. I don't need you to come up, but just a crystal-clear understanding that we understand the teams who will be serving us and when and if there is a change to those teams, that that'll be something that is mutually discussed and understood between the organizations. Is that correct? Okay, I see nodding heads.
That is absolutely correct.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that.
Thank you. I have a few comments and then a couple of questions, so you might want to take notes because I'll just run through them so we don't waste a lot of time. Imagine your surprise. Okay. I was with the Nevada System of Higher Ed and went through a workday transformation. And I will tell you, it was a transformation and you, in the first year, would probably never have said, wow, this is fabulous. I'm glad we did it. And to that point, what I know is that the nuances can be overwhelming. The training and the changes are forever ongoing. And so from an educator to educators, I look forward to learning about the the plans for continually, continuously training and educating those users in all departments. And I will tell you one reason I think this is so exciting because I can't tell you how many times I'm heard, I've heard from our business leaders that I wish there'd be some changes in HR kinds of responsibilities and and other responsibilities because it takes away from a principal, for example, being able to be that academic leader. Because you're in your office, like you said, on the laptop and you're not out there with the children and the teachers, et cetera. So that's extremely exciting. Again, I I look forward to hearing the plans for, this is a lifelong endeavor. We know that it'll never be, whoa, we're done. No, never, never happen. And that's probably a good thing. So here's a question. What strategies did you use or are you going to use in the future to capture the concerns, the interests, the ideas, the hopes, if you will, of the users? How are you going to to learn from them, what is best going to work from them? And maybe you've already done that. And then the next thing I want to ask about is two things. One is probably a little complex and might even be over my head, but I'm going to ask the question. Security, huge, huge issue. When you tell me about all the information that's going to be stored on the cloud, which to me is very abstract, it's not my area of expertise, I go, well, shoot, I'll just shoot down the cloud and get all that information. I know that's silly, but I want to hear about the security and how that will be ongoing. And then finally, this is kind of a teacher question, maybe an accountability question, an assessment question. So AST system got an eighty-two percent. That's a B minus. What is missing that you are going to ensure, we are going to ensure gets them to, oh, I don't know, ninety-eight percent? Eighty-two percent is not enough for me. Okay, thank you for listening. Okay, thank you for listening.
Thank you for the questions. I do appreciate it. I'll start, and I'll let you all chime in if you'd like. And I'll start in order, of course. So when we think about the feedback loop and how we're going to gather requirements, so Mark identified earlier that we had gathered 1,000 different requirements early on to like what it was going to take, and that's where you're getting that score of 82 from, that they were going to meet essentially 82, but that included some costs and some other things that are associated with it. In the system, there will be a continuous feedback loop. So if you are, as a user, want to request something done differently in the system, you can actually put in feedback and say, hey, I don't think I should have to do this, or I think this should look different, or whatever that case might be. Now, one user isn't going to necessarily change the entire platform for everybody, but if you get enough of those little pieces of feedback, you're likely to request some kind of enhancement or go through a demand process to change the system, right? And we wholeheartedly agree with you on principals being an educator in their building and not having to be bogged down with paperwork and things like that. And that's what we're going for as part of this. I'll chime in on security just briefly, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Turner here. And the way I like to think about the cloud is it's just somebody else's computer, right? And you're putting it on their server in a different room. The thing that I like to point out is that in any business that we operate in, we do not make the amount of investment in security or cloud security that an Oracle, a Microsoft, another like large corporation would, right, as their core business? So I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
I couldn't really say it any better. That was sort of what I was going to summarize as well. When we have a single staffer that's dedicated to supporting Business Plus here on our premises, but instead we contract with this multi-billion dollar corporation whose business it is, its sole business it is, is to develop and to ensure the security of the data that's stored in their cloud. It's reputational. They're able to apply the patches in a much more timely manner than we are. We have maintenance weekends. We might be three weeks behind a patch. We could be even more than that sometimes. So the idea that somebody else is maintaining the security protocols, emphasizing them, prioritizing them, probably in a way better than we can do, gives me a lot of comfort.
Sorry, back to that 82%. What homework is going to occur to bring up that grade?
Yeah, so the score of 82, and I could give you all the spreadsheets behind it. I'm sure Mark could give you more of those. Part of that score was based on things like cost, right? So if you look at like the third vendor in that list, they were the lowest-cost vendors, so they got 100%, right, on that score. AST wasn't the lowest-cost vendor, but they did meet the other requirements in rounds one and two. So when you got to round three or round cost, they couldn't possibly get 100% because there was another vendor that was willing to do it cheaper, if that makes sense.
It does. And so maybe in the future, AST could shoot for that 98% and give us a good deal, just out loud.
I like that thought. I like that thought very much. Just to go a little bit more granular on the requirements traceability matrix, again, we had three different tiers of kind of needs and wants. And so a firm did not get, it was kind of binary, right? You either met the condition without any configuration, right, or customization. And then if you did, if it did require customization or configuration, you wouldn't get a point. And it was to really test who fundamentally can meet our needs. But I'm sure that there are many, many of those tasks that were AST indicated, right? This would require configuration and customization, they will be able to accomplish. It was just, that's how we wanted to kind of acid test, battle test, what they could do out of the box, right, without configuration. But I'm sure we'll get far higher than 82 in terms of that area. And I should have mentioned, Andrew Sullivan, our Director of Procurement, is here as well, if you had any more RFP questions.
Knowing she's involved is a feather in my cap. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. Thank you, gentlemen. Yeah, this is not my bailiwick either. And I think all of us, you know, bring a certain strength to the board, but this is certainly a new and unique project for me to study. I mean, admittedly, when I looked at the agenda item, it hurt my eyes. I had to read it several times to understand it, and so I understand the complexity of it. I think maybe going forward, and I gave the same feedback to the superintendent, maybe something like this probably ought to have been broken down into two or three different agenda items. I think it would have been a little bit easier to digest. So some rudimentary questions, and then, well, I guess, just provide a little comment, particularly, I think, from our frontline employees and our educators. We spend a lot of time talking and really focusing in on people over programs. And so I, you know, I've gotten some feedback, this is a pretty expensive program, and how does it benefit, you know, the frontline employees? So I understand the inequity system that we have, but I'm also mindful that, you know, we're spending $14 an hour on special ed aides-in-assistance. And so it's not directed to you. I mean, that's a state issue. So I hope our legislators and our governors listening, because there's some inequities there, and this is hard for me to look at, but I get it. I do. I truly do. Question, I have a few questions here. The Business Plus software, just again, very rudimentary. Why couldn't that be upgraded to meet the needs that we have? Does it just not simply have the capability?
So we are up to date on Business Plus in that current iteration. If Power School, which is the publisher of Business Plus, had another product that was more advanced, it would require this same sort of process. But we are as up to date on Business Plus as we can be.
As you can be.
We updated every year on, we have maintenance weekends every month on a monthly basis.
Business Plus 5.0, right?
Right, exactly. We do iterative, very tiny updates. But then on Nevada Day, on that three-day weekend, the IT team, primarily one person, upgrades Business Plus. He enables many iterations of updates on that day. It's gone through a series, it's gone through months of testing, sandboxing, and then once it's production final, and all of the testing input has been positively received, then on Nevada Day, it's go live for the new version. So they continue to develop it. It's just, it's outlived its functional needs here. It's at least a generation too old for how we use it.
Okay, so I'll add to this, and I'm going to steal from Mark's piece of paper that he has in front of him. But if you look at probably the 25 largest school districts around, I think there's two still on Business Plus. I think we're one of them. The rest are on three vendors that we looked at. And the way that I would help, just give an analogy here, your Nokia phone that you used to play Snake on back in the late 1990s, right? We all probably had one. It doesn't matter what you do to it, it will not be a modern-day smartphone, right? The development process, and if they were to try to redevelop the entire system from scratch, would cost far more than I think what we're looking at. And what we're trying to do is say, no, we need a modern-day system that is like a modern-day smartphone, that is built from the ground up with people in mind, so people-centered approach, and allows us to functionally and effectively deliver the business.
Thank you for that. That's a great analogy. Yeah, remember the BlackBerries?
Yes.
Does the, and again, to be clear, there's money, this is money that's been set aside. This is not the first time this has come to us. And I have the same question for the superintendent when we talked earlier this week. The agreement, just again, for the record, if we're not satisfied, is there an escape clause, if you will? Can we exit out of the agreement?
Yeah, that's a great question. One of the large concerns of this team, and we're the executive sponsors team, was protect the district if things went badly during conversion or what have you. And we made that a point. We held our ground on liability and risk management issues. And we actually structured a pretty unique structure here. And I have to applaud Oracle for willing to be willing to play ball with us, where we can get out of this each and every year during conversion. Normally, the approach is you pay them for five years in advance for the entire cost. And yeah, you can terminate, but you've already paid them five years' worth. And this was something that, right, we have observed with other agencies. Their conversions went badly, and yet they shelled out $10, $20 million upfront, and they can't get it back. We are not in that position. We're able to terminate, claw back two and a half times what we paid in costs. That's in the agreement with AST. And again, we're not paying any more than one year's worth of the subscription cost.
Yeah, because I noticed we have an amendment to the agreement already. Go ahead.
Actually, that's with Averro Advisors or Consultants.
Okay, that's part of the confusion I had as well. And the ERP manager, you touched a little bit on that. It's a two-year temporary position. Can you give us a little better description on why that is needed? I mean, this is a position that's going to be a benefited position, and you know, why can't AST, you know, fill this role? Go ahead.
Yeah, so I think when we look at the success of an ERP project, we would take a lot of risk if we put this all in the hands of consultants, just to be fair. So we wanted a representative on our side that would manage the workload within the ERP team. There's going to be tasks, stakeholder management, communication plans that need to happen, your standard project management organization-type activities, and then Averro providing that consultancy service and advisory toward AST because they've been here, done this before. AST being your implementation partner that manages the tasks largely technical on their end with Oracle to manage the Oracle workload, and then Oracle then being just the end product. So the project manager on our side, the ERP project manager, would manage tasks within the district and interface with Averro and AST. And AST is managing the tasks with Oracle and with the system.
Okay. Can AST shorten our board meetings? I can't. And one more question. Again, I apologize, Madam President. Can you, once again, just give us, help me better define Averro contrast to AST?
Yeah, sure thing. So.
Sorry.
No, Averro has been with us for a year. I'll go with that. This is the third phase of their agreement. So the first phase was, of course, requirements gathering and moving toward the RFP. The second phase was RFP and selection. And the third phase is now assisting with the implementation and being at our advisor for the implementation. AST is doing the work of configuration and system configuration as well as interfacing with Oracle on what can and can't be done. They employ individuals that are very technical in Oracle and are able to build those configurations that we're putting forward.
Got it. Thank you very much for your indulgence.
All right, so I see trustee Westlake who'll go. And then in the absence of other lights for clarifying questions or trustee Church, then we'll go to public comment because this is an item for action, and then we'll see if there's some action on the other side of that. Trustee Westlake?
Thank you, President Smith. So I've got just a little story and then a little bitty question. So I don't think techie at all. So I'm relating this more on a humanistic level, which gives me less of a headache also, not thinking. My brain's back on Pong, okay? That's where my brain works, where the little ball's going back and forth. At Reed High School, there is a wonderful secretary there, and she's been there, well, I've known her for 14 years. She's been there a lot longer than that, and she's amazing. So I always go in and see her when I go on visits. And I walked into her office, and I'm like, what's going on? And she's like, oh, I'm getting the payroll and everything ready. And I cannot tell you how many stacks and Post-it notes that she had on her desk. It takes her days, I mean, days, days and days. I mean, just back-breaking, mind-numbing work. And I mean, she's a beautiful person for doing this because I think I would have set the whole office on fire. But this is going to help her, right? This will help little Denise. And then I'm thinking of it more on the support. If she's freed up from doing all of this compiling and entering and organizing and shifting and maneuvering, then possibly she can do other things to support Principal Rosenbloom. And this is in other schools, all the other schools too that this is going on, help the administrator do other things to better support our students and families. That's how my little brain works. Am I on the right track here?
You sound like the spokesperson for an ERP project.
Thank you.
I have one basic question, probably from Mr. Mathers or one series. How do we define this cost? Is it an operating cost? Is it a budget cost? How do we define it?
Well, the implementation cost, it's like building a building, right? The cost to build that building, the cost to build the ERP is a capital cost. And along with that is the time and effort internally, i.e. of the ERP project team, to also help build that ERP system. So that would all be paid out of a capital projects fund that has been budgeted. On an ongoing basis, the actual subscription, the annual subscription cost for that software will be an operating cost and will need to be borne by the general fund or largely, in our case, by our E-Rate Fund. And there's been changes to that revenue source so that we should receive a much greater source of E-Rate funding, which is restricted but can be used for something like this. So I hope that answers your question.
I think you know where I'm going with this. I was just researching numerous quotes by our COO, Mr. Pete Etchar at the time, on WC1. Is this going to use WC1 funds?
It does not. It uses property tax monies. And NRS is specific that equipment and software are allowed or an eligible expense of rollover money. So no WC1 monies will be used on this at all.
Thank you. That was, I was having major issues with voting on this. You know, I guess it's irrelevant, but the quotes made for WC1. So that helps a lot. Thanks.
All right, JJ, do we have anybody for this item?
I have no cards for this item.
All right, so bringing it back here, just a few thoughts. So I would say probably the year's theme has been reclaiming time. And we are often talking about reclaiming educational time, and that is typically directed towards our students. And you're probably going to hear us talk about that a little later today. But I think reclaiming time is also reclaiming professional time. And changes like this really bring to focus that inefficient business practices are a waste of taxpayer dollars, and they're a barrier to our goal of educating kids. So seeing as that we are so far behind in this way and at this point, we have a wonderful secretary like Ms. Denise, it is our responsibility to make sure that we're creating an environment that allows our staff members to be efficient and effective in our shared goal of educating children and preparing them for a future that they choose. So for that reason, I do support this. I see no other lights on, so I will ask if there is a potential motion from my colleagues.
I'll make the motion. I move that the Board of Trustees approves the Award of Request for Proposal RFP 88-P-01-24-AS Consulting Services for Enterprise Resource Planning, other known ERP, Software Procurement and Implementation Services to Application Software Technology LLC, beginning January 1, 2025, for a term of approximately two years in the total estimated amount of $11,209,491. Approval of affiliated agreements with Oracle for a term of 10 years in the total estimated amount of $11,145,626. Approval of the creation of a term-limited ERP project manager position to lead the district's ERP project team for an estimated cost of $142,384. And approval of Amendment Number One to the Agreement with Averro.
And approval of Amendment Number One to the Agreement with Averro Advisors for ERP Consulting Services in the amount of forty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-two cents.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by trustee Westlake and a second by trustee Woodley. Um, seeing no other lights on for discussion on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Thank you. Motion carries six to zero. Thank you so much, gentlemen. That closes item 3.02 and moves us on now to item 3.03. Just as a bit of a flag to my colleagues, we will go ahead and hear these next two items, 303 and 304. And then we'll take, I'm sorry, 303, and then we'll take a brief break before we go into item 304. So now we will again open item 303, the Award of Bid Number 25-15-B-09-D-A, Ghetto Transportation Center Modernization Project to Martin Harris Construction LLC in the amount of thirty-three million, fifty-eight thousand and fifty dollars. This is an item for possible action. And we welcome in front of us our Chief Facilities Management Officer, Tammy Zimmerman, and our Director of Procurement and Contracts, Andrea Sullivan. Welcome, ladies.
Thank you, President Smith. I'll start this off and then send it over to Andrea in just a second. But I want to give you a little bit of background, because I did a little research. Um, the building that exists at the current location of Ghetto Transportation was built in nineteen seventy-four. It's named after George Mike, um, Ghetto. He was a Sp- uh, Sparks High School alumni. He was a Washoe County School District teacher. And he was the Washoe County School District Transportation Director, and he created the first transportation department within the Washoe County School District. So give you that little history there, kind of exciting to, to find that out. So the site that we have currently was in the floodplain and has been removed a little bit out of the floodplain, but they've endured many floods over there. So through this project, we're going to raise that building up and put a new building in there, which will take it out of the floodplain. We're also going to be redoing their, um, fuel islands, so that they have fuel that actually can be dispensed, um, because their fuel system is, has outlived its useful life. It'll have a building that will be able to bring more staff over to that site, so that the transportation department can be more efficient in the way they run and do all of their routing and all of that together, because they'll be able to put those people in that building. It will also be able to bring in additional parking into the, onto the property, so our staff doesn't have to park out on the streets. So it's really an upgrade. I know we talk a lot about schools and that, but it's nice to see that our staff is going to get a building that helps them to function and service our students better through the transportation department. So we did finish design in December of 2023. We received Phase One funding in February of 2024. And then the second phase funding we received in August of 2024. So then we're ready to put this out to bid, um, so that we can then support and provide more bus stalls, more spaces for our staff in that, at that, that location. And so I'll turn it over to Andrea Sullivan for the bidding.
Good afternoon. For the record, Andrea Sullivan. Um, well, she gets to tell the fun stories. My stuff's not so fun, but it's equally as important. Um, so we did publish this bid publicly at the end of September of this year. We held a pre-bid meeting in the middle of October that was very well attended, which was good. We generated some excitement for this project. Um, throughout the project, we received fifty-nine requests for information. So that's also kind of an indicator of the general interest in the project. People are interested, asking questions, clarifying questions, to see if, if they would submit a bid. Um, we publicly opened the bid on November the sixth, and we received three estimates, all of which, I'm sorry, we received three bids, all of which were under the estimate of thirty-nine million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So we don't always get to say that, but not only is the low bid under the estimate, but all bids were under the estimate. Um, in fact, the low bid was thirty-three million, fifty-eight thousand, fifty dollars. So it was more than six million dollars under the estimate. And sometimes when you see a low number like that, you think, are they missing some things? Is there something wrong with the bid? But the good news is that our three bids were very close together, which is an indication of competitiveness, but it's also an indication that our specs were good and an indication that that's probably the right price, right? So our second low bid, our, our first low bid was just over thirty-three million. Our second low bid was thirty-three point two million, so very close. And our third bid was, uh, thirty-five point seven million. So we were happy that we received good interest in the bid and that, um, it was a competitive project. And so after that, we're asking you to approve Martin Harris's bid in the amount of thirty-three million, fifty-eight thousand, fifty dollars for the Ghetto Transportation Modernization Project. We're excited to get this one going, and we'll answer any questions you might have.
All right, seeing no lights on. JJ, do we have any public comment?
Ryan Gold.
Welcome, Mr. Gold. Thank you for being here.
Yeah. Uh, Ryan Gold, Director of Procurement with, uh, Martin Harris Construction. Just wanted to briefly express how excited we are at the opportunity to partner with the school district again. Um, we have fifty local associates, um, here based in Reno. Many of them, including myself, with children in the district. Uh, anytime we have the opportunity to partner with the district and, and work in a great, uh, community-based project like this, the buy-in from our associates, i- it's off the charts, and just wanted to express how grateful we are. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gold.
That's all I have for this item.
All right, I'll, uh, go to trustee Westlake here in a minute, but I will say anything we can do for our bus drivers, because they are angels. I, when I, I, when I drive in my SUV with a car full of boys, I can only imagine what it's like to, like, multiply that by ten or sixty. So, um, I think that this is a great project. Uh, trustee Westlake?
Thank you, President Smith. I just wanted to say I, uh, went over to the bus yard. Oh, gosh, it's probably been seven months, seven months ago. And it was for an appreciation day. And I love how in their building, they've got the photographs of prior bus drivers. And I, I just, I love our bus drivers, because they are such a kind, loving community that's doing something so important for our kids. And I'm so happy that we're doing something nice, um, to show our appreciation, uh, for them, because they've, you know, they walk around, they're coming in and out of the building, and they've all got smiles on their face. And it's just, it's really nice to see that we can do this for them. So thank you.
Well, our transportation department certainly positively impacts attendance. There is no doubt about that. And our bus drivers, I used to be a bus rider, so I know for a fact that bus drivers are the first and last adult that a lot of our students see. They begin the day, they end the day, and they make a big difference, one way or another, with the kiddos going into the building or going back into their home, and, and they're fabulous. To that, I'd like to make a motion. I move that the Board of Trustees awards bid number 25-15B-09-D-A, Ghetto Transportation Center Modernization Project to Martin Harris Construction LLC in the amount of thirty-three million, fifty-eight, fifty-eight thousand dollars. Excuse me. Thirty-three million, fifty-eight thousand, fifty dollars.
A second?
Uh, that's okay. Uh, trustee Woodley got there first. Uh, so we've got a motion by, uh, trustee Nicolette, seconded by trustee, uh, Woodley. Seeing no lights on for the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay? All right, motion carries six to zero. Thank you so much, colleagues, and thank you so much. We appreciate that. All right, team, it's about three thirty-six. So we're going to take, um, a tight and firm fifteen minutes. We've got a big item still ahead of us, so I will put us into recess for about fifteen minutes. And then we will come back together and open item 3.04. Thank you.
All right, everybody. Let's bring it up back here. All right, everybody. It's three fifty-six PM and I would like to call back to order this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees on Tuesday, November twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four. When we started the recess, we had just concluded item three point zero three, and now that we are back in session, we will go ahead and open item three point zero four. Presentation and possible action to approve the phone away and learn today action plan proposal for managing personal electronic devices in schools and classrooms in the Washoe County School District. This is an item, after talking about it for multiple times, for possible action, and we welcome with us our Deputy Superintendent Tiffany McMaster.
Good afternoon, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, and member of the Board of Trustees. I'm honored to be back here today to provide you with your last and final update on the progress we've been making on the management of personal electronic devices prior to launching a pilot program during semester two. If you remember, I came to you first back in August to provide you with an update on some local, state, and national trends that were calling for action in schools and districts across the nation. I was charged with some work and gave you an update on the twelfth of this month that included some substantial work in terms of gathering stakeholder input. We also announced our phone away and learn today pilot program campaign focusing on building self-regulation skills for our students and a plan to launch semester two. I shared a draft of a communication plan with you which included the creation of student PSAs that were submitted as part of a recent contest. We drafted some revisions to administrative regulation fifty-one eighty that included some special circumstances and emergency procedures and shared initial ideas around the launch and sought feedback from this board. Today, I will be focusing the conversation on goals two, three, and four, and I'm here to just really give you an overview of the phone away and learn today pilot program for your consideration. So to begin with goal number two, our plan for the pilot phone away and learn today campaign will be implemented in all Washoe County School District schools and will be based on the Board of Trustees recommendation and feedback from the November twelfth Board of Trustees meeting. An important note is just this recent last Friday, November twenty-second, our principals received some training and introduction to some communication materials as well as student lessons that will help in building that awareness prior to the implementation and start building those self-management skills for our students in advance of the pilot. Administrative Regulation fifty-eight ten is being updated and will be finalized prior to the implementation of this pilot to better outline allowable special circumstances during instructional time, which will be outlined in the next slide in a little bit more detail. But before moving on, I just wanted to also mention that Administrative Regulation fifty-one eighty will better outline emergencies. So in terms of emergencies, cell phones should not interfere with an emergency response. However, if phones are stored away from students but still within the classroom, they can be returned to students quickly as soon as it is safe to do so during an emergency situation. As promised, moving on in goal two to a better articulation of what special circumstances exactly are. Special circumstances can be afforded through Administrative Regulation fifty-eight or fifty-one eighty and would involve accommodations that could be used for students that would be for students who need to utilize technology to perform some type of major life function such as learning or maybe to regulate a health issue like regulating blood sugar. It's important to note that the technology use would be clearly articulated for a specific purpose, and individuals who are afforded these special circumstances would not be exempt from monitoring of misuse of the device. The device would only be used to support a student in being able to focus on learning and should never distract from the learning in any way. Specific conditions are going to need to be met for these special circumstances. Special circumstances are for students with disabilities which require supports during instructional time, and it's outlined within a section five oh four or an IEP process. This typically occurs with some type of medical documentation and/or a comprehensive evaluation of learning needs through a multi-disciplinary process with a team, often including a school psychologist. Section five oh four eligibility team and individualized education or IEP team follow clear criteria when making these approvals for accommodations. So to give you an example, a cellphone could be used as an assistive technology tool for a student with a disability like dysgraphia, dyslexia, or ADHD. They could use the phone for maybe some organizational purposes. They could write to-do lists. They could take some pictures of teacher's notes. They can also be used for medical needs. Assistive technology tools can assist with monitoring blood sugar, as I've mentioned a couple of times to this board. It's important, though, that cell phones are not the only assistive technology tool out there, and so part of the consideration of these teams is what is the best technology to help support the student in whatever their disability need is. So the team will explore those options and consider what kind of technology advice device would be most appropriate, and those should align to the specific symptoms or barriers for the student's disability. For instance, like a camera might be used for magnifying text or text-to-speech app might be used. Those can be very effective in helping a student gain access to the general education curriculum. While students on an IEP or five oh four accommodation remain part of the general education environment, it's essential that we're going to need to remind parents that the use of devices like cell phones must align with school policies still. Using a phone for educational purposes such as magnifying a text, if it's appropriate and part of the accommodation, would be fine. However, utilizing that technology for other uses, for example texting or playing games on their phone, would still count as misuse and could warrant disciplinary action.
I just want to say thank you so much for spelling this out because while there is a lot of support for this conversation, we have been asked very explicitly what does this look like for children who have different needs, and so I am very grateful that you did that for this. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. So the one thing that has not changed throughout this whole process and gaining feedback from the board is our objective has remained the same. So I just want to take a minute to ground us back in that objective that has been with us for some time. This pilot program is all centered around a need to address the negative mental health impacts and student learning and the social emotional impacts of the misuse of technology on students. We will partner with our stakeholders and launch a phone away and learn today campaign implementing a pilot implementation of our revised administrative regulation for semester two. So that still remains our goal. I know we've talked about a lot of nuances and exactly how we'll get there, but I do just want to refocus us on that objective because teaching students those self-management skills and healthy technology habits is really at the heart of what this whole pilot program is about. Couple of things that have been changed or adjusted based on feedback from this board that I do want to just highlight a little bit include that the district will review the administrative regulation with the proposed adjustments with all principles to ensure that we are implementing that administrative reg with fidelity in all of our schools throughout Washoe County School District. That revised admin reg will be finalized and disseminated to schools following today's action from the board. Our communication plan, which we've drafted and discussed with you, will be delivered electronically to our principals following today's presentation, so they have an exact timeline of when each step in the communication process will occur. Our schools will start engaging in teacher professional development. Principals received all of those materials on Friday in our principals' meeting, so they have access to all of that as well as the student lessons that we've talked about to start engaging students in an understanding of why it's important to make this commitment to putting their phones away and investing in their own learning. Those lessons, as we've talked about, will continue well into the pilot, but we wanted to make sure we had they had those materials so we could start that work right away. Our aware I think the awareness piece is key because that really is the first step to really making a difference with our students, and then they become aware of why we're doing this so that, as I've talked about before, we're not doing it to them, we're doing it with them when they have a better understanding of the purpose. And then lastly, based on feedback from this board, our phones will be stored away during instructional time. Our associate chiefs have been reaching out to schools to determine which schools are in need of support with obtaining storage devices, and we have that information collected. So following our feedback from this board and any action taken today, those storage options will be purchased. We are ready to go with the implementation of this pilot at the beginning of semester two. I did want to just bring us back to a couple of stellar examples of some device storage that's being used throughout our district. That first picture was Ms. Osterhag's classroom at Hug High School where, if you remember correctly, phones got a little bit of self-care when they were stored in the cellphone spa where they got to be charged and cleaned. Then we also had Ms. Coopman's class at Clayton Middle School where students put their cell phones in their backpack, hung their backpacks on a hook on their way into their classroom, and then she would close the curtain on the backpacks physically symbolizing that commitment to putting their phones away and learning while they're in her classroom.
Gathering stakeholder input. We also announced our Phone Away and Learn Today Pilot Program Campaign focusing on building self-regulation skills for our students and a plan to launch semester two. I shared a draft of a communication plan with you which included the creation of student PSAs that were submitted as part of a recent contest. We drafted some revisions to Administrative Regulation 5180 that included some special circumstances and emergency procedures and shared initial ideas around the launch and sought feedback from this board. Today, I will be focusing the conversation on Goals Two, Three, and Four. And I'm here to just really give you an overview of the Phone Away and Learn Today Pilot Program for your consideration. So to begin with Goal Number Two, our plan for the Pilot Phone Away and Learn Today Campaign will be implemented in all Washoe County School District schools and will be based on the Board of Trustees' recommendation and feedback from the November 12 Board of Trustees' meeting. An important note is just this recent last Friday, November 22nd, our principals received some training and introduction to some communication materials as well as student lessons that will help in building that awareness prior to the implementation and start building those self-management skills for our students in advance of the pilot. Administrative Regulation 5810 is being updated and will be finalized prior to the implementation of this pilot to better outline allowable special circumstances during instructional time, which will be outlined in the next slide in a little bit more detail. But before moving on, I just wanted to also mention that Administrative Regulation 5180 will better outline emergencies. So in terms of emergencies, cell phones should not interfere with an emergency response. However, if phones are stored away from students but still within the classroom, they can be returned to students quickly as soon as it is safe to do so during an emergency situation. As promised, moving on in Goal Two to a better articulation of what special circumstances exactly are. Special circumstances can be afforded through Administrative Regulation 58 or 5180 and would involve accommodations that could be used for students, that would be for students who need to utilize technology to perform some type of major life function such as learning or maybe to regulate a health issue like regulating blood sugar. It's important to note that the technology use would be clearly articulated for a specific purpose and individuals who are afforded these special circumstances would not be exempt from monitoring of misuse of the device. The device would only be used to support a student in being able to focus on learning and should never distract from the learning in any way. Specific conditions are going to need to be met for these special circumstances. Special circumstances are for students with disabilities which require supports during instructional time and it's outlined within a Section 504 or an IEP process. This typically occurs with some type of medical documentation and/or a comprehensive evaluation of learning needs through a multidisciplinary process with a team, often including a school psychologist. Section 504 eligibility team and individualized education or IEP team follow clear criteria when making these approvals for accommodations. So to give you an example, a cellphone could be used as an assistive technology tool for a student with a disability like dysgraphia, dyslexia, or ADHD. They could use the phone for maybe some organizational purposes, they could write to-do lists, they could take some pictures of teachers' notes. They can also be used for medical needs, assistive technology tools can assist with monitoring blood sugar, as I've mentioned a couple of times to this board. It's important, though, that cell phones are not the only assistive technology tool out there, and so part of the consideration of these teams is what is the best technology to help support the student in whatever their disability need is. So the team will explore those options and consider what kind of technology advice would be most appropriate, and those should align to the specific symptoms or barriers for the student's disability. For instance, like a camera might be used for magnifying text or text-to-speech app might be used, and those can be very effective in helping a student gain access to the general education curriculum. While students on an IEP or 504 accommodation remain part of the general education environment, it's essential that we're going to need to remind parents that the use of devices like cell phones must align with school policies still. Using a phone for educational purposes such as magnifying a text, if it's appropriate and part of the accommodation, would be fine. However, utilizing that technology for other uses, for example texting or playing games on their phone, would still count as misuse and could warrant disciplinary action.
I just want to say thank you so much for spelling this out because while there is a lot of support for this conversation, we have been asked very explicitly, what does this look like for children who have different needs? And so I am very grateful that you did that for this, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. So the one thing that has not changed throughout this whole process and gaining feedback from the board is our objective has remained the same. So I just want to take a minute to ground us back in that objective that has been with us for some time. This pilot program is all centered around a need to address the negative mental health impacts and student learning and the social-emotional impacts of the misuse of technology on students. We will partner with our stakeholders and launch a Phone Away and Learn Today Campaign, implementing a pilot implementation of our revised Administrative Regulation for Semester Two. So that still remains our goal. I know we've talked about a lot of nuances and exactly how we'll get there, but I do just want to refocus us on that objective because teaching students those self-management skills and healthy technology habits is really at the heart of what this whole pilot program is about. Couple of things that have been changed or adjusted based on feedback from this board that I do want to just highlight a little bit include that the district will review the Administrative Regulation with the proposed adjustments with all principals to ensure that we are implementing that Administrative Reg with fidelity in all of our schools throughout Washoe County School District. That revised Admin Reg will be finalized and disseminated to schools following today's action from the board. Our communication plan, which we've drafted and discussed with you, will be delivered electronically to our principals following today's presentation, so they have an exact timeline of when each step in the communication process will occur. Our schools will start engaging in teacher professional development. Principals received all of those materials on Friday in our principals' meeting, so they have access to all of that, as well as the student lessons that we've talked about to start engaging students in an understanding of why it's important to make this commitment to putting their phones away and investing in their own learning. Those lessons, as we've talked about, will continue well into the pilot, but we wanted to make sure we had, they had those materials so we could start that work right away. Our aware, I think the awareness piece is key because that really is the first step to really making a difference with our students and then they become aware of why we're doing this so that, as I've talked about before, we're not doing it to them, we're doing it with them when they have a better understanding of the purpose. And then lastly, based on feedback from this board, our phones will be stored away during instructional time. Our associate chiefs have been reaching out to schools to determine which schools are in need of support with obtaining storage devices, and we have that information collected. So following our feedback from this board and the action taken today, those storage options will be purchased, we are ready to go with the implementation of this pilot at the beginning of semester two. I did want to just bring us back to a couple of stellar examples of some device storage that's being used throughout our district. That first picture was Ms. Osterhage's classroom at Hug High School where, if you remember correctly, phones got a little bit of self-care when they were stored in the cellphone spa where they got to be charged and cleaned. And then we also had Ms. Copman's class at Clayton Middle School where students put their cell phones in their backpack, hung their backpacks on a hook on their way into their classroom, and then she would close the curtain on the backpacks, physically symbolizing that commitment to putting their phones away and learning while they're in her classroom.
I wanted to pass along a little bit of feedback just for consideration with this. So I'm, as we know, a big fan of all of this, but some feedback I did get is a lot of parents really like that the devices, that these piloted ideas would allow for access in an emergency at a time when the teacher says it's okay. So the request I got just for consideration is that wherever the phone spas or the caddies are, in an emergency, we often instruct our students to not be at the door. So if the caddies or the hanging, wherever it is, could possibly, if possible, not be co-located with the entrance, since we typically instruct our teachers and our staff members and our students to move away from the door, that would mean someone would have to go toward it. So if we could consider that graphically in conjunction with school police or other onsite administrators, just as we think about what those instructions might be, I just offer that, thank you.
I appreciate it, very valuable feedback, much appreciated. Okay, as we move into Goal Three, we've talked about the communication plan for our Phone Away and Learn Today Campaign, and I'm not going to go over it all again, but we did make some adjustments based on feedback from this board. And that included the creation of an FAQ document that will be provided to staff and families. We have that drafted, but we haven't finalized it because we want to get all of the feedback from this board and make sure that we've included everything, including possible recommendations on where these phones should be stored in the classroom. So we'll be making the final adjustments to that FAQ and getting them out, and it will also well-articulate those special circumstances that I've highlighted here for the board as well. Moving on to Goal Four, I just want to say we are ready to launch this Phone Away and Learn Today Pilot Program for Washoe County School District, and we're so excited to be doing that in partnership with all of our stakeholders. We have done the work to revise our Administrative Regulation and we are ready to disseminate that and get that out to our schools shortly. We have developed a professional development plan that is ready to go, we've shared it with our principals, our principals are ready to get that down to staff level as soon as this presentation is over so that we can have that all completed prior to the launch of our pilot. We have spent a lot of time getting lessons together that promote that self-management and those healthy technology habits. That is all ready to go, has been in the hands of our schools for some time, so they had a minute to digest it for planning purposes. Our PSA contest is complete and we're carefully selecting those winners currently, so we'll be ensuring that we're using some student voice in advancing this work and helping students use their own words to stress the importance to their peers. Device storage provided to all schools separating students from their phones during instruction is planned for and will be completed prior to the implementation of this pilot. We have district-wide announcements that are ready to go out with consistent messaging that can be used at the school site through connect ads that'll be sent out at the district site, as well as consistent, ongoing messaging that will be used throughout the pilot as well. That FAQ document's going to be prepared and finalized and disseminated to answer all of those little individualized questions. And one bit of information that was helpful that we got from teachers is we're going to encourage our teachers to make sure we're taking consistent attendance and promoting parent use of Infinite Campus because that way, parents will have confidence that they can account for their students' location and well-being without having to rely on a cellphone to do that. So with that, I sincerely appreciate all of you and the commitment that this board has shown to rebuilding the culture of learning where students have the desire to get off their phones and learn. This is more than just a regulation or a pilot. I think we all know that the misuse of technology warrants a call to action where we have the opportunity to build awareness and self-regulation in our students. And with that, this superintendent recommendation is being brought forward to you for consideration, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have, as well as various other team members that are in the audience.
Thank you. Well, I think the most important person that we should hear from is our student representative, and so Annie, I would be very grateful if you could lead us off.
Okay, mostly I just have questions because I feel like I've given plenty of feedback on this. But I don't know if you would know the answer to all of these, but what would teachers do, because like, for example, in my language classes, I think is when I use phones the most because a lot of times when we do like voice recordings and stuff, those little recorders, we have to like put in the batteries each time, and then it's a whole hassle and our classes are already short enough that it'd be more time taken away from learning time, so we use our phones, which I think is pretty effective in that scenario, obviously I know, not all the time, but what would teachers do in that case? Like, can we go get our phones out of the caddies and do that?
That is a great question, I'm so glad you asked it. It's actually afforded for in Administrative Regulation 5180 and is already drafted in our FAQ, so I'll get the opportunity to run the answer by you to see what you think. Students may be allowed to use their phone at teacher discretion for classroom purposes if it's approved, but it would not be a typical thing. We would want to encourage the use of laptops and other devices. However, there are some exceptions to the rule, but we are going to ask that teachers work with their administrator before approving such use so that we are consistent in that implementation and we're ensuring that it is for an educational use. And it's also good feedback for administrators and district staff if there's a desire for a technology need that we don't currently have capabilities for in our student laptops, that's information we need to know because we should be affording it through our own technology. And I appreciate the question, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you for that answer. And then also, maybe, I don't know how, I was talking with one of our admin at my school and we were talking about like testing and stuff because we wanted to do something with a bunch of computers, and he was like, oh, actually, like the wifi, like the bandwidth will not uphold. Like for AP testing, we're going to do all of our testing on computers, and so like, they're trying to find like where the strongest wifi is because like our computers can't hold it and things like that. So if we're using like strictly computers and things of that sort, how will that affect schools who don't have like updated use to like wifi and mostly wifi?
I think that would be a question I would certainly want to have our Chris Turner, our Information Technology Chief, answer, but just in general, again, if our system is not being effective or doesn't work effectively, we need to know that and we need to address it, we need to put work orders in and have that fixed. I think sometimes that we so quickly are used to things just not working, and so then we just do workarounds instead of going to the root of the problem. So if the root of the problem is that there are internet connectivity issues at a school site, we need to know that and address that.
Yeah. And then, oh, this is my biggest question, I think, because we have some sneaky teenagers, which it's fine, but like, I know, and I know this has been talked about, but how are we going to keep track of who's turning in their phones? Because also, when you get down to the younger ages, like I didn't have a phone until eighth grade and then things like that, like you can't, like if someone's like, well, I don't have a phone, like no one can prove that they do, really.
You're shocking me with that teenagers can be sneaky, I never knew this. No, you are absolutely right, and I think that's why this whole campaign, it's not about mandating something and policing it because we know that everyone will always try to find a way to work around it if, first of all, they don't believe in it and don't understand why we're doing it. That's why we're spending so much time on the front end trying to explain the why and get everyone to buy into this. I know that I've already seen, had a sneak peek of some of the PSA announcements, and I think students are doing a really good job of explaining that why, so I'm excited to get that word out. So that's one key piece. And then also, remember, this whole launch of this pilot is not about a ban on cell phones, it's about a commitment to getting students to regulate their own technology use and have healthy habits that are going to last them a lifetime. So it's not about banning it and putting it away, it's about, I'm asking you to make a commitment to putting your phone today, away today, and learn. And I think more, the more teachers can use that language instead of taking a phone away or, I didn't see you put your phone in your caddy, where is it? Just say, remember, in this classroom, we're making a commitment every single day to put our phones away and learn today, and I just want to make sure we're all making that commitment. I think it's a healthier approach and, you know, I think it's time and we have an obligation to do it with students. So what you're talking about is the reaction you're going to get if you do it to students, I believe.
I really, I like that a lot, I think, I know I spoke on it last time, so I think that's a really good approach, and I do think students will be more understanding, like yes, there are some sneaky teenagers, but there's a lot of understanding people out there too. And then I think it was kind of on, I think, Goal Three or Four where it answered about how it's going to be in middle schools and high schools, and then elementary schools will be separate, kind of?
Yeah, most of our elementary schools already have cubbies that are separated from students or backpack hooks that are separated from students. So they're already using a system where cell phones or devices are kept in their backpacks and kept away from students. Middle and high school is a little bit different because students are carrying their backpacks around, they're rotating from class to class, so it's really a different level of complexity. So having some type of device or a way to store it away from students, especially since not all of our schools utilize lockers and things like that, that's where we've had to get a little bit more creative and think about solutions for schools.
Okay, well, that answers all my questions, so thank you.
Thank you so much, Annie, I always appreciate your feedback so much.
Thank you, President Smith, and thank you Deputy Superintendent McMasters. I just, I just wanted to say that I hope no one feels that we're doing this to students, we're doing this for students. This was born out of concern, it was born out of love, it's born out of wanting to see our students be as successful as they possibly can be. And I think we just, we would be remiss if we just kept going along as we have been and thinking that it's all going to kind of work out in the wash. I appreciate getting a consistent plan, and I appreciate what you just said, that this is not about taking something away, it's about building something else, it's about building their educational experience. And I am so happy for this and so appreciative of the work that you've done on this, that the team has done on this, all of the input that's gone into this, because I think this is going to be huge for our kids, I really do. I think this is probably one of the most thoughtful and caring and considerate things that has come along in a while, so thank you.
I'm going to piggyback on that just really quickly and then go to Vice President Mayberry and then Trustee Church to really capitalize on something Deputy Superintendent McMasters said and that you also said, and this is actually a request for all of our journalism partners, so for our news partners, our journalists, I am asking you, please, as a favor, to not use terms like cellphone ban, that is not what this is. I realize that that's really pithy and very desirable, but what this really is, is it's a tech, education, and management plan, and it's during instructional time. I believe that this team has built a thoughtful approach that we are piloting based on feedback from thousands of people in a plan that represents the autonomy that our children need to learn as they become young adults and community members. So that is my request for anyone listening out there who has a blog or a news channel or a, or a article or anything that they write, please, please try to use this language while we evolve this conversation as a community, because we know that the other phrasing may be true in other districts or other communities, but that is not what we might be voting to do today. Vice President Mayberry.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. No, thank you Deputy Superintendent, I think this is, as Trustee Westlake pointed out, this is one of the more consequential decisions I think that that will make over time, it may not feel like it, but I think it will, and, you know, teenagers can be sneaky, I have a couple, and they've been lobbying me really hard at home not to approve this. So I might not be able to go home tonight for a little while, but I think your messaging is, is, is right on target, as President Beth stated as well, and we're not banning cell phones, I mean, they can certainly still access phones during passing, during lunch. Couple of questions I have for you, these are primarily clarifying questions. Can exceed the policy and do some exceed them now?
Thank you so much for the question. Yes, they can exceed the policy, and I will tell you, we currently do have several schools that do. A higher level of restriction can certainly occur. Many of our middle schools have done that, and it's afforded for an Administrative Regulation 5180. It states, and I quote, "At the discretion of school administration, students may possess or use electronic devices outside of the classroom instructional time, provided that the use of such device does not interfere with the instructional process or normal school operations." So in some of our schools, they've decided as a team that normal school operations are being disrupted, and this happens a little bit more at our middle school level. Where they're really trying to figure out what is appropriate use and are defining those boundaries. So those schools that have done so, I want to stress that they've done it a very thoughtful way where they have engaged with their stakeholders and a whole process has happened to get them to that point. Our pilot in no way implies that a cellphone should only be monitored or regulated during a school day, the focus of the pilot is really to promote those self-management skills, and if we have such evidence of the school that those self-management skills are just not there yet and they need more time to develop, we can certainly have for the regulation at a school that will ultimately impact technology use hopefully well beyond the school. So yes, it is afforded for, and I will tell you, majority of our middle schools are much tighter just because of that developmental appropriateness at that level.
I'm glad, yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, I've heard the same thing, particularly with the middle school level. We're not looking at new technology for this, you know, I mean, I know there's a lot of districts that use recharging pouches and pockets, I mean, this is really whatever the teacher wants to use at the spas, we saw the curtain over the backpacks.
Yeah. For schools who do not have some type of system, we will certainly be working with them and getting a system in place and helping with the purchase of such storage devices, but for schools who've already engaged in that process and they have something that's working, we really don't want to uproot something that's already ingrained in the culture of the school that's working effectively. So we'll be working on an individual school site basis, we have some recommendations to provide guidance to schools moving forward with that, but we don't want to discredit some of the hard work that's already been taking place.
Thank you, I have a couple more questions, I'd like to turn to Slide Four if we can in the presentation, turn your attention to Bullet Point Three, if you could help us understand what that would look like. The self-management skills and healthy technology use will be developed through lessons.
Excuse me, so we have a whole battery of lessons that have been provided to schools that are part of curriculum that we've had for years through a variety of resources, common sense, media, Step Two, a lot of different resources that we've pulled from that are specific to technology use. They teach students those self-management skills, like when it's appropriate to use, when it's not appropriate to use, takes them through problem-solving lessons, engages in some inquiry. I can't give you a specific example because it does differ at every single level as those lessons are different for, for each age group.
Do you anticipate all of our students will have some, some education on the proper use of a cellphone, is, I guess, is the thrust of my question?
Yes, so our principals received a packet about a month ago with all of those lessons. On Friday, when we had our principals' meeting, we went through that resource and kind of talked about the timeline, these are the lessons to implement prior to an implementation, these are the ones to implement at the launch, and these are the ones to implement throughout the pilot.
And I really like the fact that this is a pilot program, and so as we go through this in the second half of the school year, what will that look like in terms of evaluating and revisiting it? Will we hear from you again, will we sort of get some feedback from our administrators, make adjustments along the way, maybe tighten it up if we need to, if it's, if there's some gaps?
Yes, absolutely, thank you so much for the question. We've been working with our accountability team and they have kind of a robust monitoring system already established. It will include opportunities for engagement with different stakeholders, some in survey format, some in focus group. format, some in focus group format. We'll also be tracking other indicators like discipline data, misuse of technology violations within our campus system and things like that. So we have different measures. We hope to come back to this board probably mid-spring, April time or so, with some type of an update, so that you get a feel for how things are going. We should have enough information that's robust enough to report back by that point in time. I do want to remind you back when we talked about stakeholder engagement, we did launch a pretty extensive family survey during this fall time, because our annual climate survey doesn't open until the spring for our families. We will have preliminary data on that before the end of this pilot. And what's great about that is we have baseline data from the beginning of the year, and then we'll have data from the end of this implementation. So it will be really great information to bring forward to this board.
Well, I think it's great that we've gotten a lot of feedback from moms and dads and guardians, and made them part of the process, and strikes a really good balance from just outright ban, if you will, of electronic devices to something that's more real, reasonable, realistic, allows moms and dads to track their children. I think it improves the safety. I appreciate addressing that emergency piece. I think that's really important. Thank you for all your effort. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Few brief comments. Number one, I love the idea that was said that it's not a ban, it's a reasonable restriction, and it's a pilot program. It's essentially, for lack of a better word, an experiment that we're going to improvise, adapt as we go along. And to my, by the way, every email that we've had supports it. Not one parent said, oh, let my kid have, you know, unlimited access during class. So my one question, ADA, what happens when a resourceful kid says, oh, I got an ADA, and I don't have to tell you why, so I want to keep my cellphone?
So any student that has a disability that feels they should be afforded a special circumstance, has to go through a whole process with the school site team, either through a Section 504 plan or an individualized education plan. There's lots of criteria that needs to be met. It's a multidisciplinary approach for that evaluation, and many people weigh in on that. Like I said, we would explore other technology devices beyond a cellphone, really starting with centering on what is the need, and how would the student benefit from the technology. So it's really not as simple as, I want to be able to use my cellphone. It's a really in-depth process that would be something that a school site team that involves many members would need to consider.
I guess the bottom line is they're not going to be able to play that card without some follow-up to that.
Yeah, and typically, we have some type of medical documentation, or, you know, some type of thorough multidisciplinary evaluation that would inform that decision. It's not just, you know, an anecdotal, I think I should have this accommodation.
And I can only assume at a bare, bare minimum, if a devious student played that card without justification, we'd reach out to the parent and go, you know, is this correct? So, yeah, I get it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, I have a sense that the administrative regulation is going to identify a lot of these issues, as well it should. I mean, as a board, we already have two policies that I think currently address them as they should in a policy, and they're basically an overview, and that's Board Policy 5100 and Board Policy 5700. And I think that they're extremely clear, and yet they're policy-based. They're not procedural-based, and I think we're on it. I wonder about smartwatches. What have the discussions been?
Great question. We actually receive a lot of those questions from our elementary level. That doesn't seem to be as much of a prominent issue at the middle and high school level, which is very interesting. So at the elementary level, we've had a lot of parents saying, what about that? You know, I bought this. The same policy administrative regulation, if you remember, we were very forward-thinking in the naming of this policy. It's not management of cell phones, it's management of personal electronic devices, which includes watches. So that's one of the updates in the administrative regulation. When it was made back in 2015, there were words like "pagers" in there, which aren't used anymore. So now we've had to update it to some smartwatches, and I'm sure for 10 years from now, we'll have something new to update it, too. But yes, it's treated no different than a cellphone. A watch is a personal electronic device, and if it's interfering with instruction, this admin regulation outlines what we should do about that.
So I wanted to jump in first to thank Deputy McMaster for her leadership in something that's really important in our schools. Our Board of Trustees, our principals, our teachers have all identified this is an area where we can make an improvement. And indeed, our efforts are to reclaim instructional time and to maximize instructional time to maximize learning. And I think that this is a significant step forward that we're making in Washoe County School District towards that. And there, what is, what is something that I think very positive related to the way that we've gone about it, is we have really been thoughtful, methodical, and really worked to build this as well as we can to have strong early implementation. You know, there could have been a move to move very quickly, and maybe that implementation then could have been wrought with, with different pitfalls. And what I really like is that the team has worked to really pull this apart in significant ways. We have reached out to our families, to our students, and we've really been thoughtful. And so I think right now, going into our campaign, phones away because we're going to learn today, I think we are going to do it with our students, with our educators, with our families. And I, I'm just excited about the step that we're going to be taking, and really want to recognize Deputy McMaster, her leadership, and the entire team's leadership in doing a very good job with us moving forward i- in this area.
Fantastic. On that note, JJ, do we have any public comment on this item?
Valerie Fianaca.
Welcome, Ms. Fianaca.
Thank you. Happy holidays to you all.
Good. Before we get started, Ms. Fianaca, I want to give JJ a moment to open up the public comment screen. Apologies for that delay. Thank you so much, Ms. Fianaca.
Let me gather myself anyway. Are we ready? Okay.
Yes, please.
I didn't know I could request something from our community media partners, but I don't see them in the room. But hopefully they'll hear me, because I'd like to request that they stop calling myself and my colleagues book banners. We've been called that many times this year. I had no idea I could request a language change, and I'm officially requesting it right today. Considering that you're debating making our children put their phones in a closet or a spa, which I'm totally in favor of, I think this is the best policy to come down the pike in a long time, I would propose that you also hold yourselves, all of you, to the same standard. One of our trustees has proven he cannot control himself, and he has misused his phone during a school board meeting. I would prefer you all do the correct and moral thing and ask him to step down, but since we know we're not dealing with a moral group, with the exception of very few, we can, the least we can expect you to do is to lock up your phones during meetings. My mom used to say, a foolish man focuses on pleasure and happiness, and a wise man focuses on death and the afterlife.
Thank you, Ms. Fianaca.
Katie Simon-Holland.
Welcome. And you know I'm going to say it, former board president of this Board of Trustees, Katie Simon-Holland.
Thank you, Madam President. And, and thank you, trustees and Superintendent Ernst. My name is Katie Simon-Holland, for the record, and it's a pleasure and an honor to speak before you today. I'm here representing Mike Kazemirsky and strength in our community, which many of your staff members have been working with us on finding solutions to some of our community's most pressing problems, including chronic absenteeism. Mike regrets that he couldn't be here today. But we want to applaud the district's efforts to address the use of cell phones by students in our schools, and encourage you to move forward with the confidence that in approving the pilot plan, you're doing the right thing for students. And I just want to say, you know, having been a student and practitioner of change management, I really want to applaud the district for all of the steps that you have taken. And Deputy McMaster and the team, you've done an amazing job so far of change management. We'll certainly have some bumps along the road, but I want to compliment you on that. In Mike Kazemirsky's recent opinion piece on cellphone use for the Red Crossed Journal, he notes a 14-country study by UNESCO, which is the United Nations Educational, Scientific, and Cultural Organization, that showed that countries that enforced restrictions on cellphone use in schools saw, all of them, saw improved academic performance and reductions in bullying. Currently, 77% of US schools already have restrictions on cellphone use in the classroom. We know that cellphone use increases anxiety and stress, encourages cyberbullying, negatively affects attention spans and academic performance, decreases physical activity and face-to-face interaction, and presents the potential for well-documented risks of addiction. The district team has crafted a well-thought-out plan that allows for critical individual needs. We urge you to support it, and when the time comes, perhaps expand it to bell-to-bell restrictions. Our students, our schools, and our families have so much at risk and so much to gain from your action today. And again, thank you all for your leadership and courage in bringing this plan forward. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Simon-Holland.
Pablo Navadurán.
Welcome, Mr. Navadurán. Thank you for being with us today.
We want to take my cell phone.
We should, actually.
All right, Mr. Navadurán. Thank you for being with us.
Hello, guys. Hello, guys. My name is Pablo Navadurán. And as we just linked, so I'm a Gen C. I don't use my cellphone at school, nearly K to 12 public school, ever, until my senior year in high school, because I don't have no cell phones. My own cellphone, I use my mom and my dad's cell phones. I tell my senior year of high schools, when I got my own cellphone, aged 17. So this isn't all I am. So I'm 26. So, so when I stopped there at school, I saw a lot of students use their cellphone. I tell them, say, please do, put the cellphone away. Like, you know, I asked so many times. I yelled them. I yelled them. I called our admin office, took a cellphone away, but it doesn't work. Well, it doesn't work. So, you know, my first year, not very good for managing students on cellphone base, because I feel like the student on a cellphone space, when you saw the early age, compared to my age, which is rarely use cellphone at early age, the only technology that I could expose is a video game, and that's it. Yeah. Oh, yeah. I love pay video games. So, so, yeah. So, and early, they changed, because the kids at an early age proposed themselves on technology use on cellphone, because some parents gave down their own cellphone during their kindergarten and elementary school, which I'm so shocked to see. And when they're doing use cellphone a lot, the more you use cellphone, the more the additions. So I do support policy that bans cellphone. So time to ban cellphone, because the research shows the school with the banned cellphone can reduce learning outcome. So I will approve that policy. I have to move it forwards. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Navadurán.
By the way, I got one more question.
Was there time left, JJ?
All right, just a brief one. Yeah.
All right, 54 seconds. So, so if you do understand, maybe we could have a new board policy, you know, to put the cellphone on spot during a school board meeting, because when you use your cellphone, but it's not the phone. I see many of you use your cellphone, but not that you, but pretty board meeting, I use cellphone. And it's not the school board, city council, county commissioner, and it's a sparse meeting. So let's try that.
Thank you, Mr. Navadurán.
Darla Lee.
Welcome, Ms. Lee.
Yes, good afternoon. So I am very encouraged by this report. And as some of you know, I've been very concerned about this very issue for a while. And I'm curious, but this pilot program is going to be for the whole school district? Is that correct? Okay, great. And I know that you've been working on it since August, so it's been moving quickly, I would say. And so my only concern would be if all of the lessons that you were talking about, have they been implemented? Or, I mean, if this program, this pilot is supposed to start already in January, so I want to make, I would assume we want to make sure that the classroom and the teachers are truly prepared. So these lessons have been implemented already for this pilot program? Is that correct? Or is it in the, I kind of, from your report, it sounded like you were doing it in phases. So that would be my only concern, that there is a real general acceptance of this whole plan. And otherwise, so I'm encouraged, and I'm assuming everyone will vote for it. So that's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. And I'll ask that follow-up question once we're done with public comment.
The board received emails from Julie Costa, Melissa Link, Bethany Foxel, Melinda Worley, and Dylan Fuller.
Thank you. I'll take up that question on behalf of Ms. Lee. Can we just take a quick moment and walk through what happens next, so our community knows pending the outcome of today's vote?
Yes, absolutely. We are ready to launch right away at the conclusion of this board meeting. We've spent a lot of time getting materials ready. As far as the implementation of those lessons, principals received a summary of that document through our internal communications a while back, and then it was reinforced through our professional development this past Friday. I will say it is a very aggressive timeline to get all of this work done prior to January 1st, but we're all committed to doing our due diligence to make that happen.
Thank you. All right. Trustee Nicolette.
I would like to make a motion. I move that the Board of Trustees approve the proposed action plan for managing personal electronic devices in schools and classrooms in Washoe County School District.
Y'all, second to that.
All right. So we have a motion by Trustee Nicolette, and we have a second by Vice President Mayberry. Seeing no lights on, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries six to zero. Thank you so much, and great job, team. I appreciate, yeah. The compliments were well-placed on this. This was a thoughtful plan. Whereas there was a lot of interest in pushing some sort of a conclusion, we took the time to build a solution, and that is very different. Thank you so much.
I just want to say, for this holiday, Thanksgiving, I really, truly am thankful, not only for the engagement of this board, but the entire community, with over 10,000 people weighing in on this topic. I'm truly grateful.
Thank you so much. All right, that closes item 3.04 and Section 3 in its entirety. We are reaching that time of the year where it gets dark very early. So in recognition of that, and the fact that we value our public's time, I'm going to go ahead and pause on Section 4 in its entirety, and make sure we have an opportunity to hear most directly from our public before they have to hit those roads before it gets too dark. So for that, I will open Section 5 and open item 5.01, Public Comment. So for that, I will open Section 5 and open item 5.01, Public Comment. Was that Reese? Yes, welcome, Reese.
Hello. I am here on behalf of Huck High School and Mr. Dinosaur's Classroom. I hear he has a bit of a reputation. This is my government final. I'm Reese Gabriel. I am, trying to think about this. I am president of one of the clubs at Huck High School. I also am considered one of, I consider myself one of the lucky few students who succeeds in that school. And I'm here today to address the problem of driver's education. In this day and age, we do not have easy transportation sometimes, especially for a lot of the students that may attend Huck High School. Given that, many students may struggle to get to school. They may struggle to attend all their extracurriculars. They may struggle to succeed without proper transportation. We do have a wonderful bus system, but given that issue, I believe it would be wise to give to students of at least sophomore year, some access to driver's education. Because with driver's education, we can reduce that problem. We can make getting to school, we can work on that chronic absenteeism. I believe that's how it's said. In any case, if we can forward driver's education, if we can push that out there, we can reduce, we could probably reduce a lot of accidents. We can reduce, you know, absenteeism. More people can go to school if they can learn how to drive and get themselves there. And I believe that is all I have to address on the issue. But in general, driver's education could be, I know it would be expensive, but it could help a lot of students with general issues, extracurriculars, extracurriculars, and other problems.
Thank you so much, Reese. So do you mind me asking, what is your graduation year? Is this your senior year?
Twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five. See you in June on that stage.
Sheri Jamison.
Welcome, Ms. Jamison.
She might have left already.
Okay.
Valerie Fianaca.
Welcome again, Ms. Fianaca.
Thank you. I've been coming here for years, as some of you know, and watching with amazement the attempts to get rid of the duly-elected trustee, Jeff Church. This board actually appropriated a huge amount of money this year to investigate him and engaged outside law firms. He's been persecuted mercilessly on many occasions, and to my amazement, he has withstood it all. Kudos to you, Jeff. I don't know how you did it. What has the investigation turned up? We'll never know, because nobody's going to tell us. But I suspect a lot, if it was even done at all. You have a trustee now who has admitted to sexting during a board meeting, a school board meeting, and crickets. I call hypocrisy on this one. The only thing you have accomplished with all of this persecution of trustee Church is exposing your motives to the public, and more importantly, and probably intentionally costing Mr. Church a fortune in attorney's fees. Something you care nothing about, because you're using our taxpayer dollars to go after him. And I find that hugely insulting.
Thank you, Ms. Fianaca.
Janet Butcher.
Welcome, Ms. Butcher. Thank you for being with us today.
Janet Butcher, for the record. I always thought driver's ed, even back in the 60s, driver's ed was part of a school curriculum. I'm shocked. Anyway, I would like to piggyback on what Ms. Fianaca brought up, that I too noticed that we endured false allegations and a dog and pony display put on by the school board's attorney against trustee Church, but silence in an actual embarrassing situation with Mr. Woodley. Is Mr. Woodley's political aspirations more important than the students? It would seem that it would be in the best interest that Mr. Woodley do step back and resign, and I would certainly hope that the other trustees on the board. It really makes you kind of wonder that, that there's something kind of strange, because we do know that when we came before the board about the sexually explicit material being promoted or being allowed for the students, that there were all of the trustees, except Mr. Church, who voted to keep the sexually explicit material available. So it really makes you kind of wonder what exactly is going on. I would conclude that the honorable thing would be for Mr. Woodley to resign immediately, and that the ensuing candidate be vetted properly, because it's my understanding that people did know of past allegations. And it would be in the best interest of the community to do a special election unless the second runner-up from the primary election be installed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Butcher.
Fred Meyer.
Again, oh, thank you, that the sun shines a little brighter in Nevada today because of the elections. We expect to see some change here, folks, and you all are the ones that need to do the changing, not us, okay? And we're here to make sure that it happens. We're not going away. We're going to get bigger and stronger. Every single one of you, every single one of you, needs to listen. We're tired of coming here, being jerked around, and y'all sit here and, I don't know, fake fain paying attention, or giving what we say or our concerns any real thought, or, you know, concern on your own parts. We want you to, let's see, don't, we don't want to call, you don't, excuse me, you don't want to call removing cellphones from the classroom banning. Okay. We don't want to call removing dirty books from the schools banning. Even, let's keep it even. Don't call it banning. Let's just call it removal, just like the cellphones. We're down with that. Woodley needs to step down. Why won't he? Where is he? Not here, he's hiding? They don't even have his picture up here. I want you to throw one up there, so you can look at me and I can look at him. We would like him to give his constituents an answer as to why he will not step down, or a response, one of, some kind of a response. We deserve that. We demand that. We expect that. Of course we do. Why wouldn't we? And all the backslapping, everybody's done such a great job. It doesn't look that great on you guys, I got to say. And I don't mind when people have done a good job, but it happens just drippy gooey all the time around here, and I think it's kind of disgusting, considering the condition of schools in Washoe County. It's like, hello, yeah, you guys are getting paid to do a job. You don't need to be glad-handing everybody and handing out all these, you know, gushing kudos to everybody all the time. And I'm not saying people don't deserve encouragement. That's not what I'm saying. But sometimes it gets to the point of ridiculous for us out here, as we see the schools' educational system, I'll say, crumbling or not improving with all the money. My gosh. So we would just appreciate if you would start paying, well, we're going to make sure you start paying attention to us one way or another, and I'm not sure what the other is, but this is the forum we're given. This is how we are allowed to.
Thank you very much, Mr. Meyer. Appreciate it.
The board received emails from E. Gerskovich, Joni Hammond, Robin Pixton, Tiffany Grun, Victoria Meyer, and Barbara Fleming.
Thank you so much. All right, colleagues, that closes item 5.01. Okay, well, no problem. We'll let you go ahead and give the public comment. As a, as a general instruction, we accept closing public comment either via email or in person, but while we sort that out, we always err on the side of speech. So welcome, Ms. Meyer.
Thank you, yeah, I didn't submit an email, so I don't know what that's about. But Victoria Meyer, for the record, and I just want to suggest that we're aware of some things happening in our county and in our schools and in our districts and with our board members and other people in Washoe County. There's just a lot going on behind the scenes. One thing we've noted is that this seems to be a platform for further political aspirations. Apparently, Mr. Woodley has spent some $92,000 for a $700 a month job, and has resigned from his very well-paying city job to remain on this school board after being caught sexting on a taxpayer-funded public cellphone, obviously to hide it from his wife, so he knows that it was wrong. Mr. Woodley, I'm sure you're listening. Your refusal to resign is a disgusting display of arrogance and an insult to this community. We realize you have further political aspirations, as do some of you, others on this board, and we realize that it is a platform and it's a well-funded machine going on behind the scenes. Mr. Woodley, you're a Marine, I understand. Honor, courage, integrity are guiding principles of being a Marine. You have violated these principles and values by sexting at the city, at the county, here at the school board on February 2nd during a meeting. It's outrageous. You are not a role model for our children. Anyone who sits on this board ought to be able to be held up as some kind of role model. I don't care if it's not illegal or if it's a private matter. And the fact that this board supports this person is despicable. Each one of you, except Jeff Church, has supported this person to continue on this board. As we talk about cellphones, our children, we don't want them entertaining themselves in the classroom on their cellphones, but Mr. Woodley gets to sit here and entertain himself sexting during a meeting. Sexually entertaining himself. It's really outrageous. You people are just, the freight train's going to come. So we have a new administration, and I'm really excited about that. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer.
That's all I have.
All right. Okay, everybody. So that closes item 5.01, and we'll go back to Section 4, our report section, and we'll go ahead and open that up, starting with item 4.01, our student representative's report. Take it away, Annie.
Thank you. For our report, Student Voice has been working on our three groups and our focus groups, so respect, mental health, we call it something else, and I can't remember. And then, like, student resources, so things like college access and other resources like that. So we've been working on our projects for that, so we'll have tangible projects to give out. I really can speak on respects projects, so what we want to do is have each admin at every school, really, do a respect statement, kind of, and I know that sounds really kind of woke, but in more, like, we probably wouldn't call it that, because I don't think that would draw anyone in, but we would want to call it something where students can see that, like, here's how I can be respected, how can we respect you? So it's like getting a mutual understanding of what that looks like, so there's not that disconnect, so connecting adults to our students. And I think that's the first step we can take, because we can't just, like, solve the issue of disrespect or enhance respect in one uniform way. So that's kind of our starting area. And then we released our poster for accessing Niche, which is a, kind of like, it's a college advisory-type website. I don't really know what you would call it, but they have a lot of good resources for how to apply to colleges, and it's not something that schools typically talk about, so we're trying to get that into schools, because obviously you can't really support a random website, but Student Voice can, so that's what we're doing. And it's a great way for students who aren't sure where to start with college applications to look at, and you can be any age to look at it, really. It's not like applying to a college, it's just getting information on the colleges, their ratings, will you get in, all the things. So it's a really great resource. And then the mental health group is working on the resources and a resource page for all students to have, so that it's kind of all in one area. So if you're having any problems of any sort regarding mental health, you can go to one spot and not have to deep search for that. And then we also met with Ms. Holland and Mr. Kazemirsky. I really hope I said that right, but we talked about chronic absenteeism, which I know she spoke about, she's not here anymore. But we spoke on that, and they got our opinions, and it was really great to see the ways that students are being included in these initiatives and being heard. It's kind of the whole point of Student Voice. So it's really great to see the outcomes of that, and we look forward to see how it will affect us in our schools.
Thank you. And gosh, I will say that I hope that promoting respect is embraced, and you can call it respect. At least, I hope so. All right, that closes item 4.01, and now brings us to item 4.02, our board reports, and I'm going to start over here to my left with trustee Church.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Among the events that I attended, I included a JROTC event at the Monty Ranch High School, wonderful event. I'm so proud of the students and all they do there. Kids that get involved in any special project, any club, group, et cetera, always do so much better and succeed. It's just a wonderful program. I did receive my obligatory peanut M&amp;M's from the students, so thank you very much, except I will say half of them were broken. They were M&amp;W's. Moving along, I do want to comment on what one of the speakers said. I hope that the next applicant for trustee to replace Mr. Rodriguez receives a background investigation prior to the actual appointment. I know in normal employment, you get a conditional offer of employment pending some kind of a background, et cetera, et cetera. So I hope we follow that. And then I also wanted to comment on, we just received November 15th, the report from the chief auditor. Chief auditor works for us, the board, does not work for the school district or the superintendent, independent of that. Included in there was a complaint that I filed back in 2022, over two years old, and it's listed as open. Why does it take two years for the chief auditor that works for the board to investigate something? Two years. What's going to happen when I'm gone? Are they going to go, oh, he's gone, so now it's moot, and we're not going to do it? So the independent auditor, chief auditor, works independently. It's a simple complaint, and basically he should ask for independent counsel to look at it and make a decision. And it's nothing devious. I've got a minute left. Nothing devious, there's nothing against another trustee. It's simply asking about the legality of us belonging to 501(c)(3) organizations that are not related to education, or 501(c)(6) lobbying organizations that use our taxpayer dollar to lobby for different events. So no citizen's going to totally agree on what we should lobby for or against via a third party. We don't even have any control, once we belong to that third party, what they lobby for. So I don't believe we should be using taxpayer dollars to hire lobbyists that are independent of the school district. We can argue all day long about our legislative platform, but to have 501(c)(6) lobbying organizations get tax money, you know, to me is wrong. But that's my legal question that I asked the chief auditor. Apparently, it has merit, because, or at least it has enough merit to investigate, because it's open, but it's been open for two years. So I call on the board to apply some pressure to resolve that after two years. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Church.
Thank you.
I just really quick want to say that being respectful and being a good person is a lifelong journey. And none of us are without making mistakes. We all do. Everybody does. Nobody gets a free pass on that. And I would love to see people work on having a gracious and a humble heart. And that's gonna be my Thanksgiving wish this year. Okay, moving along. I did a podcast with Trustee Mayberry. For Sparks Interest, shout out to Dennis and Dave. It was a pizza tasting podcast, but we did talk about and tackle some really great issues like I-Ready we discussed. Here is a picture at Virginia Palmer. They break out into their dens. There's the Falcon Den, there's the Viper Den, Tiger Den, and I can't remember the other den. But it's awesome. It builds their team spirit. It's just a wonderful, wonderful thing. And they cheer each other on and there's competitions. It's super fun. And then the next picture is I was in a classroom where a teacher was working on reading with young students and breaking out words. I think it's just wonderful. My five-year-old grandson is actually doing these lessons now, sounding out words like bet is buh, et, and then putting it together. And some teachers even use like the, the chopper where they're buh and then et and chop it and then put it together. I mean, it's amazing the interaction that goes on. And the last picture here is at Esther Bennett with Principal Gladys Diaz. I hosted a pizza party for two classrooms there. Ms. Olivera, and I know I'm gonna butcher this name, Tassasosus. They had perfect attendance. These two classes had perfect attendance. I also did a donut party at Robert Mitchell for a class that had passed all of their lessons in I-Ready. I am so proud of these kids. It's, it's amazing what they're doing. Met with Child Family Services with Trustee Nicolette, Tina Springmeyer, Jen Van Tress, you rock, a special ed meeting, signed the beam at Debbie Smith CTE, very exciting, and visited Coral Academy with Trustee Smith and Trustee Mayberry. Wonderful, wonderful people there. And shout out to Desert Skies Middle School, Jordan and Leslie, among 55 eighth graders nationwide, not statewide, nationwide to win the Jack Kent Cooke Foundation. Future makings for an engineer and an attorney, and I can't wait to see what these kids do. Thank you. I'm, I'm a governor-appointed position. I'm a school board trustee for the state of Nevada for the Early Childhood Advisory Council. And I learned something very interesting that I want to share and provide some insight to others. It's called STIP, STIP. It's the statewide plan for the improvement of pupils. And it's a 2030 initiative, if you will. 2025 to 2030 initiative. And it's, it's coming from the Nevada State School Board and through the Department of Education. And I just wanted to share the three targets. I don't believe that the document is ready for review yet. And I would like, as trustees, for us to keep an eye on that because I think we need to be very aware of what's in this document. Number one, there, there's three targets. Provide equitable access to high-quality PK-12 learning. Number two, strengthen educator development, retention, and recruitment. And number three, strategically invest in student learning. So to sum it up, as I learn more, I will continue to share it with you because, I mean, let's face it, those three are kind of right in our wheelhouse. And I personally want to keep track of this because, I'll just be forthcoming with you. I asked the question, so what information have you solicited from the 17 school districts and school board trustees? Well, they hadn't. And so I'm just sharing, that's a red flag for me. And so I'm gonna stay on top of this because, and, and I'll keep you in the loop too because I think it's extremely important that these kinds of platforms don't come down to us. They need to come through us and with us, just like our cellphone policy. So this was a little bit of a red flag for me, and I'm just sharing that it can be marvelous work if we all work together. The Nevada Association of School Boards, we're putting our final touches for our annual conference, which will be here in Reno. I've visited several schools. And the, the thing I want to highlight here at the end is that I attended two hours, the beginning of the School District Leadership Academy. And there was a fabulous speaker and she spoke on hope. And I used to say, hope is not a strategy. Well, I am here to tell you I am wrong. Hope is a strategy, and I am going to purchase this book, Making Hope Happen for all school board trustee members, so that you can read it and feel some of the same things I felt at this training. And I'm thankful for them.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving to all of you on this, on this board and to the superintendent and his staff. Thank you for, for all that you do. I'm truly grateful to, to serve this community and, and this district. So God bless you all. My report will be brief. I attended Coral Academy as well with President Smith and Trustee Westlake and had a wonderful time. They left a little early and then I was ushered into a room that had a flight simulator. And so you, that was, that was the best part. Yeah, it was incredible. I mean, this was like a, a real flight simulator with, you know, instruments and pedals and a monitor. I, I wanted to take it home with me. But I appreciate too the opportunity that Clayton and I had on the podcast. And finally, I did, I have a chance to, to visit Florence Drake Elementary with Principal Jason Shipman. And he had told me that he was gonna be recognized in, in a few days, and indeed he was. And so I congratulate him and all his staff for their success, being recognized by the National Association Elementary and Secondary Education Act, state program administrators for increasing proficiency with the special populations at his school, which includes the homeless, migrant, English language learners, some of our most vulnerable students, increasing proficiency in math, English, and language arts. So again, to all of you, have a happy Thanksgiving.
All right, Trustee Woodley.
Thank you, Madam President. Can you hear me okay? Awesome. I apologize for not being there. Our Thanksgiving trip to visit family was planned many, many months ago. But I would like to take a moment to address what has been said about me in the news and in public lately, particularly as it pertains to my conduct with a public mobile device. I have always held myself to a higher standard, but I am not perfect. I had a serious lapse in judgment and I am disappointed in myself. I want to apologize for my conduct to the residents I represent in District E. I apologize to the dedicated staff of the Washoe County School District, our students, and their families. I also want to apologize to my colleagues on this board for the distraction and any hardships this may have caused any of you. There have been many comments and reports that have been directed towards me, many of which are false, are not entirely accurate. Regarding the electronic correspondence that has been reported, I can tell you that at no time was there any communication with any Washoe County School District staff member or any student or individual affiliated with this organization. Going forward, this is a personal matter that I must reconcile with my family and with my God. And I have asked them for forgiveness, and that is where it will remain. I want to be clear, I have no plans to resign. I will remain laser-focused on my role as a trustee and ensure that we move this organization forward, improving academic performance for our students and maintaining a healthy work environment for our staff. I want to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving. And I ask that you please remember, as Jesus once said, "Let him who is without sin cast the first stone." Thank you.
Thank you very much, Trustee Woodley. All right, so this is the season of giving thanks, and it's easy, easy giving all the incredible work happening in our district. I'm grateful for the masterclass in commitment professionalism and love shown by former superintendent and most recently former interim superintendent, Dr. Kristin McNeil. May she be somewhere riding Xander and enjoying her well-earned re-retirement. I am grateful for the leader who guides us today, Superintendent Joe Ernst. Choosing you was a unifying moment for our board and district. And I am thankful for all you have accomplished already and can't wait to see what's to come. I'm grateful that our CFO, Mark Mathers, the best in the biz in my book, is always game for a new idea. Our current budget accomplished incredible things we once only dreamed of, and it was the piece de resistance of last year. Your team and you guided our process with precision and talent. I'm grateful for the presidents of all of our employee associations. Kalen Evans of WEA, Colby Riordan of WISPA, Lisa Romero, and Karen Thompson of WESP, Officer Megan Lidle of WISPOA, Tony McMillan of WOOPDA, and Scott Barclay of SPA. You are a model for shared success. Thank you for trust falling into what we are building now. I'm grateful for our educators who pour their hearts into our students. I receive emails all year round from parents who share the magic happening with their kids, thanks to members of our team. I heard from a mom named Kristin who glowed about the outstanding talent of her son's kindergarten teacher, Elsa Tinnan of Hidden Valley Elementary. Another mom named Jen from Colin Ranch Elementary messaged me about her son's bus driver, Ms. Noel, who went above and beyond to ensure his safety. I could go on and on about all the stories I hear, and each one fills my heart. I'm grateful for Kindra Fox and all of our librarians, our guardians of literature, for their poise, strength, and protection of their profession. I'm grateful for my trustee colleagues. Each of you has taught me something important and I am better for it. I adore sharing this experience with you. I'm grateful for the people who support our board. Chief Tracy Moore and our school police for keeping us safe. Chief Legal Counsel Neil Rombardo for his and his team's tireless work. Chief Communications Officer Michelle Anderson, who always gives it to me straight. J.J. Batchelder, Jennifer Caldwell, and Nikki Gubbs, who keep us operational while demonstrating patience when warranted, firmness when needed, and keeping us stocked with iced tea always. I'm grateful to my boys and my family. I love you dearly. I'm especially grateful to my mom who often steps in to help, watches every meeting, and takes my call when I drive home on these Tuesday nights. I'm grateful to my neighbors for choosing me to serve them. It's a trust I hold dear. And finally, I'm grateful for our students. From our pre-K littles to those graduating from the Rise Academy of Adult Achievement, you are my why and you make this all worth it. So for all these reasons and more, I give my deepest gratitude to you and wish you a happy Thanksgiving. I love the Thanksgiving week board reports. All right, that closes item 4.02, and we move on to item 4.03, our superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Smith, and happy Thanksgiving to, to all of you. I hope you all have a, an enjoyable holiday season with, and are able to spend some time with loved ones and just be able to remember all that we have so much to be thankful for. It's kind of nice, some of the gratitude that's been expressed. Our, our, our executive assistants put a gratitude tree out here in the hallway that you may have noticed. And, and one of the things that's really nice is all of the gratitude that they have been given. They are the model of customer service that we are shooting for. They demonstrate it every day with all of those that they serve. And so just wanted to, to, to make mention of that. Aside from that, we did have a wonderful academy last Friday. And it did center on the science of hope. And hope is at the core of what we do in education. And it was an important message for all. It's work that we will continue to move forward on from here as well. And so it was an inspiring message, and I appreciate the willingness to, to purchase some of the literature that was shared. So with that, I just wanted to close. And again, there's been many thanks given, and, and thank you for doing that. It is an incredibly hard-working staff, and I'm very honored to, to work alongside all of them. Our communications team put this together around hope and what's happening in Washoe County School District, and so I think we could close with this.
The fall semester saw a strong start for the district. More teachers were hired as we began the school year with an educator in every classroom. Comprehensive training and support at each school to counteract chronic absenteeism resulted in a 4% improvement at the end of the first quarter. Our students and families were welcomed back with expos, clinics, and welcome sessions. Resources included ways to receive meals, home literacy kits, iPads, and more. The district launched school-of-choice applications for school year 2024-25, resulting in more than 1,500 applications. Our students' voices are being lifted with opportunity and advocacy from advisory councils and student-led development for teachers to increase funding for athletics, clubs, and activities. Safety continues to be a top priority. Multiple updates throughout the county, including single-point-of-entry, improved visitor management systems, and upgraded handheld radios for emergency response. Safety and belonging for our students includes safety and wellness courses for sixth through 12th grade students to enhance prevention and student awareness of bullying, cyberbullying, and harassment. The district expanded translation and interpretation services to support students and families and received additional grant funding for Safe Rounds to School to provide materials to elementary students for the Be Safe, Be Seen campaign. More goals are also being reached in academic growth and achievement. The school district provided 30 additional allocations for our one- and two-star schools to lower class sizes and provide more individualized support. We have developed criteria and processes and awarded schools with exceptional academic achievement and growth. Washoe County School District is also empowering all learners for their future. This means personalized letters to incoming ninth-grade students with a QR code linking the most up-to-date information on graduation and diploma requirements. Expanded CTE programming to include fire and forensic science, medical assisting, aviation, multimedia communications, web design, and much more. The district developed tools for monitoring students' progress toward advanced diploma attainment, including the launch of a new early warning system that identifies students in grade nine through 12 the moment they fall off track for graduation. Last but not least, new and improved system-level initiatives are taking hold. The school district has added data modules to support students on 504 plans, school nursing, and special education. Plus, new tools in Infinite Campus to allow families to communicate more efficiently with schools about tardies and absences. All in all, the school district is meeting the strategic plan goals, adding resources for educators and families to continue lighting the way for a successful 2024-25 school year.
Oh, I love this. All right, team, that closes item 4.03, and I will go back and reopen section five. We've already done section 501, our, our closing public comment. Which brings me now to item 5.02, our next meeting announcement, which will be Tuesday, December 10th, 2024. And just as a reminder to our community, that is the only board meeting that we have in the month of December. We do not have that second meeting due to the holidays. That brings me now to item 5.03, adjournment at 5:27 PM. Thank you all so much.